How are you?
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Caucus Meeting. Today is March tenth, two thousand twenty-one, approximately six thirty-five P. M. I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could I please have a roll call?
Mayor Cranjack?
Here.
Councilperson Woo?
Here.
Pharaoh?
Yeah.
Park?
Yep.
De Gregorio?
Here.
Sabari? Katrubis?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Acting Borough Administrator?
Here.
And Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor, except Councilwoman Sabari.
Thank you. I also note that this meeting is being conducted virtually via the Zoom application. And the public will have an opportunity to be heard by Zoom. Could you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement into the record?
This meeting has been duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of Chapter two thirty-one of Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, also known as Open Public Meetings Act or the Sunshine Law. Notice of the two thousand twenty-one annual meeting and council meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, posted on the borough's website, posted on the outside doors of the borough municipal building since public access to the building is not allowed because of COVID nineteen. Other borough facilities were applicable and provided to all parties who have requested a copy of such notice. Because of COVID nineteen pandemic, this meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom pursuant to various executive orders promulgated by Governor Philip Murphy pursuant to provisions of Public Law two thousand twenty, Chapter eleven, which also allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to various local finance notices. Promulgate, I can't even say that word, by the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Finance Board. Notice as to Zoom access has been provided according to law.
Promulgated.
Yes, promulgated. Thank you.
That's the word. Thank you very much.
Mayor and Borough Attorney, I'd just like to add something to the agenda under new business.
Sure.
I don't have, what I'd like to add is very simple. It's advertising for a deputy borough clerk.
Okay, and that's being added to the caucus and to the regular meeting, correct?
Yes, under new business.
When was that decided, William?
Well, I don't think anything's been decided because he just had.
It's just for discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, it's for discussion in closed session? You're adding it to closed session, yes?
No.
No, we're adding it to new business.
New business.
Awesome. If you look at the agenda, new business falls outside of closed session on both the caucus and on the regular agenda?
Yes, I saw.
And that's where it will be added. So having said that, can we have a motion to go into closed session, please?
So moved.
I'm sorry, who moved it?
I did.
William.
Second?
Come on.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
No.
So, Madam Clerk, could you please read the appropriate language for us to go into closed session?
Whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters. And whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the Borough Attorney. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA ten colon four dash twelve. Pending litigation regarding the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Affordable Housing, eight hundred Sylvan Avenue LLC versus the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, McMorris versus Englewood Cliffs and Duffy, Concerned Residents of Englewood Cliffs versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, and Contract Negotiations Borough Phone System.
Okay, thank you. So the council governing body will go into the closed session now. And for the public, we are going to try to definitely rejoin you before eight o'clock when our regular meeting begins. But we do have a lot of things to discuss. I just can't tell you exactly when we'll be joining you, but we are going to do it on or before eight P. M. Okay, great. So, Madam Clerk, would you please put everyone except who needs to be in closed session all into the waiting room?
Okay. Okay, Mayor.
Can I have a motion to come out of closed session, please? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, let the record reflect that all members of the governing body present to commence in the executive session are present to recommencement of the open session of the caucus meeting as well as the Borough Attorney, Borough Clerk, the Acting Borough Administrator during the proceedings, the Mount Laurel Special Counsel, the Borough's Financial Consultant as to affordable housing, the Borough's Planner as to affordable housing, and the Borough Engineer Representative, Mr. Zimmerman, were present at portions of the discussions. The board, the Borough Mayor Council, discussed various matters involving developers' agreements, pilots, and concept plans for the Hudson Terrace Affordable Housing Project. Formal action is going to be asked to be taken, Your Honor. It's motion, it's resolution number eighty-three. There was a discussion as to the motion brought by eight hundred Sylvan on a claim of breach which is being handled by my office, and I gave the governing body an update. I gave the governing body an update on the concerned residents appeal to the Appeal Division. I'm going to ask, Your Honor, in the regular session for an authorization from my office to handle the appeal on behalf of all named Borough defendants and the Borough current and former council members. There is, there was a discussion regarding the McMorro versus Duffy case in which I'm asking the governing body to give me direction as to whether or not to pursue the appeal on behalf of the Borough and Ms. Duffy that was being handled by my predecessor. And there was a discussion as to the ongoing negotiations by the Acting Borough Administrator with outside vendor for a new phone system as well as separate issue regarding nine one one. The formal action that will be taken, Your Honor, will be taken in the regular meeting as per the discussions I just mentioned. That's all I have as the executive session, Your Honor.
There anything else being added to the agenda?
I believe, Your Honor, that at the council president's request, advertising for deputy borough clerk is to be added as well as the two matters I mentioned, the McMorro versus Englewood Cliffs case direction and the concerned residents of Englewood Cliffs appeal direction.
Okay, thank you. We do need to open to the public.
Yes. Order, I believe Councilman Katrubis wanted to bring up the subject of a part-time rec director.
That's on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
New business already on the agenda.
Okay, good. So we are going to open to the public. The public has an opportunity to speak now or at the regular meeting, which hopefully starts in five minutes. I'm trying to keep on schedule tonight. Or at both. So can I have a motion to open to the public, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please virtually raise your hand or wave at me, get my attention. If you're on a phone and no one else is speaking at the time when you unmute yourself, state your name and address and what you'd like to say. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, can I have a motion to close the public portion, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second. Second.
Aye.
Are you in a post? Okay, what I'd like to do is end the caucus meeting and take two-minute break and go into the regular meeting.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Caucus meeting.
Second.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so to the public, thank you for joining us this evening. We're pretty close to schedule. We're going to take a quick two-minute break and then start the regular meeting. Okay, thank you.
Now. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is March tenth, two thousand twenty-one. It's eight-ten P. M., and I call this meeting to order. The meeting is being conducted virtually via the Zoom application. And there are special rules regarding that which the Borough Attorney will tell you about. At this point in time, I'd like to have a flag salute.
Flag allegiance, flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
Public, which stands. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. Liberty, justice for all.
I'd also like to have a moment of silence for resident Gary Medagatos.
George, George Medagatos, Mayor.
I'm sorry, George Medagatos. Thank you. Okay, we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Cranjack?
Here.
Councilperson Woo?
Here.
Pharaoh?
Yeah.
Park?
Yep.
De Gregorio?
Here.
Sabari? Katrubis?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Acting Borough Administrator? And Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor, except Councilwoman Sabari.
Ms. Duffy, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
This meeting has been duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of Chapter thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, also known as the Open Public Meetings Act or the Sunshine Law. Notice of the two thousand twenty-one annual mayor and council meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, posted on the website, posted outside the doors of the Borough Building since the Borough, since public access to such building is not allowed because of COVID nineteen. Other Borough facilities were applicable and provide to all parties who have requested a copy of such notice. Because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, this meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom pursuant to various orders promulgated by Governor Philip Murphy pursuant to provisions of Public Law two thousand twenty, Chapter eleven, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to various financial notices promulgated by the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Finance Board. Notice as to Zoom access has also been provided according to law.
Thank you. I just want to clarify for some members of the public who had questions about the meeting that we had last week. Last week was a special meeting, also known as a budget workshop, where we worked on the budget for this year. We also took care of one item of business regarding the I. T. system and consultants that we retained. And there'll be more updates in this meeting regarding affordable housing. And I know some people are wondering why we didn't talk about that last week, but that wasn't the purpose of that meeting. So you'll get an affordable housing update tonight. I should also mention that in terms of a COVID nineteen pandemic update for the Borough, today was a very good day. We had no new cases today. The last case, last positive case was diagnosed on March eighth. We have, right now, we have nine active cases. We sadly had seven deaths in evidence, and our condolences go out to those families. And we've had a total of three hundred seven cases in town since the start of the pandemic. As we move on, I'd like to tell you also that we are still involved with the Borough Charity Project, which is the Office of Concerned Food Pantry in Englewood in Cecilia's Church. There are many people in nearby communities who need our support because they are food insecure, and we should try to continue dropping off nonperishable food items at the police station or just going online and contributing to the Office of Concerned Food Pantry. I should also mention that in terms of good news tomorrow, there is a beginner's yoga for stress management, which is, it's good that it comes the day after one of our meetings. So it starts at seven-thirty and goes to nine P. M. It's being conducted virtually via Zoom, and there's dates through March and April and the beginning of May. So if you go to the Borough website, you could find the, the link to that Zoom yoga.
Namaste.
Then we also have department head reports. I know everyone's gotten them from the various department heads on council. We're joined tonight by our Acting Borough Administrator, Ms. McMorro. And I'd like for you to spend a few minutes updating us on what it is that's been going on. I know it's been a very light, easy month last month, but in all seriousness, I do thank Ms. McMorro tremendously for spearheading so many of the projects that we've had, everything ranging from affordable housing, recreation, straighten up some minutes of meetings, COVID nineteen precautions at Borough Hall and Borough Buildings, sanitizing all those buildings, dealing with the phone system, and adding staffing where requested and needed, enhancing recycling, and I'll just turn over the meeting to you for a few minutes.
Oh, sure, Mayor. Thank you. Well, it has been a busy month. What I've been, obviously, first and foremost, most importantly, is working on the affordable housing. I'm going to start with that because I see we have resolution eighty-three on the agenda authorizing the execution of the Michaels Group. I see Jonathan Levansky's on the call. And, you know, I have to tell you, it has been, it has been two months working with a great team, the people at Michaels, our team, our Borough Attorneys, our special litigation counsel on affordable housing, Mike our engineers, just everybody getting this to where it needed to be. We had to tweak some things. Mike Mastratton as well and Bob Howell. We had to tweak some things that we inherited, but staying positive and looking forward. Instead of looking at what was wrong, we just made it right. And I'm very proud of this project and how it has evolved. It started back in, when I was in a different role, working with you, but it is now an even better project. And I look forward to have this within our borough. And I truly thank everyone for getting this done, including Mary Beth and Josh Bowers, Leslie London today. And everybody worked together. And I'll let the Borough Attorney or anyone else has questions, I'll let them ask that later. Separately from that, Mayor, I've been busy on just looking at the phone systems, cell phone systems, the hard line systems. I gave the council an updating count in closed session, and I will be presenting, making the full presentation no later than the month of April council meeting. On top of that, I've done my first grant for COVID nineteen. I worked very closely with Andy Hippelit and and Mark Neville. Not saying we're going to get any money, but you won't get it if you don't try. So we're putting in for about, it's about eighty-seven thousand eight hundred. And this was a challenging grant because you had to, you had to come up with ideas on how to help prevent COVID nineteen. And it had to be for individuals that were considered low, low income. Seniors are considered that. So working with the county and with Mark and with Andy, we came, we came up with this grant. And I need this resolution tonight, which is Resolution twenty-one seven seventy-five, to upload into the system with the application that I will be filing before the deadline in March. On top of that, we had our budget workshop last week. We have our next one on the eighteenth of, of March. And then, last thing, Mayor, I will let Craig Zimmerman from Colliers update all of you on what I've been working with, with the engineer. We found out at the eleventh hour of the deadline of whether or not we were going to lose the grant. There was a grant for Summit Street that we were not sure that Andy Hippelit and Craig were going to be able to rescue. For whatever reason, it was not, the council didn't move on it timely last year. And this past Friday at twelve was the deadline. And we found out on Friday that we were getting the extension, so we don't lose the money. So I'm really happy about that. The other things that we're working on with them is the road program. I know Councilman De Gregorio had also brought up about the entrance to the school. We're going to be doing that, Mayor. But we can't put it into the Riverside Cooperative right now. We have to wait until they come out and visit us, and then if they don't include it, we'll just do it separately, but it will get done this year. So that's being addressed. Everything else, I think I'll let Craig talk about that. It's, it's, it's been a busy month.
It certainly has. I just wanted, I'm referencing the March nine progress report that we've done in the last month, and and Ms. McMorro has, has, has said that we did rescue Summit Street, so we do have an extension to Summit Street into November to award that, and that gives us time to design and bid the project. This was part of the fiscal year twenty nineteen NJ DOT grant that we, that was previously received, but then just was a little stagnant for whatever reason last year. But deadlines being what they are, we were able to savage that, and we will be able to get a proposal before the board on April, so next month, for the actual design and bidding of Summit Street. So right now, that is a big go on behalf of Englewood Cliffs, so that's a good win for us. If I may continue, same, same in regards to Fifth Street. That was an NJ DOT fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty merge where we're looking to, we previously have spoken about Fifth Street and how we need an additional time. So just like what we're going to need an extension for Summit Street, which we receive, we're going to do the same thing for Fifth Street. So we'll be working on that for the next month or two. I don't anticipate any problems at this time, nor Mr. Hippelit, Andy, of course, as you know. So that will be in the works in the next month or two coming. We are also looking towards a CDBG grant, if I may continue now at the bottom of page one. For twenty and twenty-one, that's the ADA bathrooms in the, in the Borough Hall, along with the improvements to the Police Department's building. We have.
The bathrooms are at the police station at the Borough.
I'm sorry, I might have misspoken. I apologize. It's in, it's in the same building as, I usually say that because the board is right behind where the bathrooms are. And so we're going to update those and make them more ADA accessible. They are in need of redevelopment, and we've talked about this in the last Borough Council meeting. We are looking, I think, on, on this evening to have an approval to, in order to proceed to provide that proposal. So I think that's one of the resolutions we have on the docket for this evening. Riverside, I'm just going to jump to page two. We have Riverside Paving Co-op. In the last month, we have gathered all the quantities that we needed to, and that is bubbling very, very nicely with the Riverside Co-op. There's nine streets which were previously selected by the DPW, and so we are, all that is on pace, and there's nothing of concern right now that will be eventually talked about at another, up at in North Vale for, who controls the Riverside Co-op. That's in April. So right now, we're well ahead of the game. We are providing our final specs next week so that I can go out to bid. We have also started the location of Outfalls in Englewood Cliffs that was approved last month. So we've kicked that off of the DPW in the next month or so, or even by maybe the end of this month, we will have those locations of all the outfalls that we have found, and that will be put onto a GPS coordinate system. We talked about that last month, so that now is also in play on our end. Is, there's a few here on the report that we might want to have the Borough consider. That would still be the open space grant for twenty twenty. That has to do with Witty Field. We're still waiting for some discussion, I think, on council and on that. We're waiting for also, and while I'm saying waiting, there's no problem. It's just one, you know, we just want to get our feet wet and jump into this when the time is right. Tax map updates, which we can talk about at a later time, is something that we still have on our radar for the benefit, I know, Englewood Cliffs. We can talk about if they don't want to be rasterized, updated, put on a GPS coordinate system as well. The municipal building emergency generator, we're, we're looking to eye for possibly down the road with, with, with the Borough. And the moral road drainage project also is not on hold, but is something that we should talk about in the months that are coming up while we kick out the current project that we're working on. We also, I think this evening, are going to have a public reading for the second viewing of the stormwater management for the ordinance that was presented last month. So that's something for tonight. That gets, if that passes and everything's fine, then we will bring that to the county's attention that, that you, that the Borough is, is compliant with the new stormwater rules. Last but not least, I think I've covered everything except the 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 Borough-sponsored FSHC project. That's what we're talking about in and around the Borough Hall and with the sixty-sixty-five units for ADA, not ADA, sorry, to code of compliance. We're still looking for a phase one from the previous engineer. We have not been in receipt of that, and that has to do with the demolition of the Lions Club and the community building, and I think also an office building as well. So we're still working with the, or trying to work with the former Borough Engineer in order to receive that, so we can assess the phase one environmental report, which they were supposed to have already provided to us. So that's still in play on our end to, to get that from them. And last but not least, I believe that on this evening's resolution to be approved is a traffic study that is in conjunction with the Hudson Terrace redevelopment area and, and how that, well, time is of the essence now, as we know, that we want to be able to finalize a traffic study that was minorly done previous by the engineer, which we, we thought was insufficient or did not have enough detail. So we want to add the the, the
Glenn. Glenn Devon.
Thank you, Mr. De Gregorio. I appreciate that. That needs to be added to the traffic study, both in existing and proposed condition, and so that would be well worth our time to, to provide that. We've already been working with the planner and, and Michaels in developing that concept we saw earlier, which is, you know, a part of, of the ongoing plan. So I think we're in pretty good shape this month. Entertain any questions if anyone has any at this time.
Craig, forgive me.
Of course.
I have a question.
What is the reason why the prior engineer hasn't provided you with the phase one environmental study?
I don't, I don't think I can answer that sufficiently, Mayor. I wish I could. It's just been no response on their part. And so we've been trying as best we can to, to get that phase one study from them, and we're just continuing to try right now.
Bernstein, can you, can you write a lawyer's letter to Neglia Engineering and ask?
I, I will inquire Mr. Hippelit on that issue. I had spoken to him about it before, and I will see where we are with that, and then we'll send the letter to Neglia.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
Mr. De Gregorio, go ahead.
Yes, Craig, thank you for the report. I did notice the traffic study, and the cost on the traffic study was twelve thousand dollars. It seems, seems a little steep to me. I mean, that's probably maybe fifteen dollars per taxpayer in town. Why so expensive for a traffic study on those small streets there?
Well, you have, with, with, I'm sorry, I keep getting that, the center spine road, Clendenin, is that correct? Clendenin, I'm sorry. That's my bad. That is integral to the entire project, and that was not included in the original Neglia traffic report, which in our opinion makes it obsolete and also was a little off scope in that regard. So we want to come back and do a more robust traffic study, which would traditionally be according to the traffic standards, which everyone follows in New Jersey as best they can for existing and proposed conditions. So while I sit here, I can't, I don't want to speak poorly of the previous engineer, but they, they didn't provide a complete product. but they they didn't provide a complete product for the four thousand dollars, and they came in rather cheap because of that. Twelve thousand, as I typically have seen in my travels and in my
Not to mention that they did it on the wrong street, right?
Well, that's part of it. I'm trying to be a little gracious.
Yeah, but I'm very direct, so I think the public should know that.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I appreciate that very much. It just needs, it just needs to go back to square one with a more robust, more logical existing proposed study, and that is where the quantities and the estimate and the time and the materials that are required would be a twelve thousand dollar effort on our part.
Well, maybe the public would be interested in exactly what does a traffic study entail? And why would, you know, just break it down for us? Because Glendenon is a, it's a really small street. And, you know, I think any resident could probably stand on Glendenon and see.
It might be a small street, but it's a big project.
That's exactly, that's exactly.
Of course, but at the same time, if you could break down for the public what that would.
Ms. McMorro has the floor, David.
Mr. Zimmerman, if I may jump in here, because Andy Hippelit was the lead on this, and I understand he's away tonight, so.
Yes.
You're filling in for him, and I greatly appreciate you being here on his
My pleasure.
No problem. I worked hand in hand with Andy on this, along with the Chief of Police. I got the email from Mr. Neglio questioning your bills. You know, it's disappointing, because I brought up to them in the last meeting that the prior engineer, and I'm not here to talk badly about one or the other, but he's, since Mr. Di Gregorio seems to want to go there, Mr. Neglia provide, provided a report for the wrong locations. Not only did he, he didn't do a proper parking study, and he did not do a proper traffic study. That's number one, it wasn't sufficient. So thank you, and Andy, and your company for coming in and doing everything needed to be done to keep us on track. And we are all greatly appreciative of you jumping in at the last minute and taking over this, this.
Craig, I don't want you to misunderstand me at all, and I don't, and I'm not going.
Mr. Di Gregorio needs to be, if you could explain to him that there is a difference between doing a simple count of cars and a regular traffic study, and when you want to turn two-way streets into one-way streets, which we are doing on this, on this project, on this project. We are looking to turn Con Terrace one way, going from Sylvan Avenue to Hudson Terrace. And then we are looking to turn New Street, going from Hudson Terrace to Sylvan Avenue. That is a huge undertaking for an engineer to do it properly, so.
Okay, I, point of order. Point of order. I'm just, no, no, I'm, I'm just, I don't.
Hold on a second. Mr. Quari, what are you done with?
Well, I'm going to let Craig, what was explained to me by by Andy, that it's a huge undertaking to study with the chief, and he did it with, along with the Chief of Police and everyone else needed to ensure, and it does meet all the criteria. We're excited about it, we're happy, we had to get it done, it got done. It's not just a regular traffic study. We're talking about changing two-way streets.
Mr. Zimmerman has been.
I, you know what, I just need to say something right now. One second, just.
There's been a lot thrown at Mr. Zimmerman, so let's let him respond to Mr. Di Gregorio. Yes, I know you're muted, David, because you keep interrupting us, so that's why you're muted. And I'll unmute you now. But Mr. Zimmerman, could you just please respond to that? And just just give us a little more wholesome idea of what a traffic study entails.
Of course, and Ms. McMorro is correct. There is also, there's existing traffic for the streets that are currently in play in around the subject area. It requires to go out and either figure out, by the normal technology, normally, in times gone by, it was with a, you know, like a rubber string across the road. Now they have more video capabilities. We have that power to do all the turning, all the time involved to go out and assess the correct conditions, the correct turning for the existing condition, to rate all the traffic that goes by there on peak hour, sometimes on off hour, but this would most likely be on peak hour. And then we would do the same thing in reverse. Make sure that now we're changing the 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 traffic routes, adding parking, adding all the the loading of what is expected for the Borough Hall, as well as the redevelopment and the and the COA and all compliance. How that all proposed parking, the traffic movement all works in synchronicity with each other. Now that we have Clendenon in, you know, in play, we need to assess that, because that's essentially the spine of the entire project, which was missed by the previous Borough Engineer.
Thank you very much. Mayor, could I just say, Mayor, could I say just one thing without being muted for a second?
Because you have the floor now, yes, of course, but.
Okay, thank you.
Or then you don't have the floor.
Thank you. Look, I, I, I do want to express myself, and I do, I don't want, I will not interrupt anybody. But if I continue to be muted, I really have to look into, because the public has a right to know of my questions, and you're denying the public.
No, that's not true.
Them hearing the public. So, no, 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 you're interrupting me, and you said I could talk, so please let me talk.
Yeah, but you're talking gibberish.
If my civil rights are being violated, and if they continue to be violated by your muting me, no, no, don't interrupt me, please.
Not being violated.
If if it continues to be violated habitually, look, if I'm screaming and yelling like a maniac, I would, you can mute me, that's no problem, but I'm asking respectful questions, and you're still muting me. And I will have no.
David, so when you put your newsletter out, make it clear that I mute you.
I'm not talking about the mute.
You're interrupting people. If you have a question for Mr. Zimmerman, we are paying hourly right now. Ask him your question and then take up.
I did, I did, and he answered, and thank you, and I'm not finished yet. But I just want the public to know that I'm asking respectful questions. I could give a crap if it's Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter to me. I just want, I just want to ask questions about the funds that are being spent. That's all, you're interrupting me again, and I just want to finish.
You're using vulgar words, you should not use vulgar words during a meeting, Mr. Di Gregorio, please. Go ahead, unmute yourself.
So you muted me again. So again, you're denying the public hearing, you know, it's their money. Every hundred thousand dollars this Borough has in the budget is thirty six dollars per household. This is twelve thousand dollars, and, you know, you mound that all together. So I'm just asking the questions, that's all. Please don't mute me in the future. The public has a right to hear what I say and what you say and what William says and what Tim says and what all the council members say. That's all, I'm just asking for that, that's all.
Are you finished?
I am now finished, yes.
Good. You are interrupting Ms. McMorro, you are interrupting other people, that's why you are muted. Your civil rights are not being violated, okay? Wait your turn, raise your hand, you have the floor. I just asked if you were finished, you said you were finished. Now, I recall you coming on council, and this money matters so much to you all of a sudden, and to your fellow travelers from last council, which was dominated by your political party. When you were paying Al Wunsch hundreds of thousands of dollars for affordable housing work, Al Wunsch is not an affordable housing attorney, you were okay with that, because he was on your side of the aisle. The way I run a town is I don't care what side of the aisle people are on. If they're doing a job for this Borough and they're doing a good job, they should be paid. If they're just there because of politics and they're wasting our money, and you're paying Al Wunsch hundreds of thousands of dollars for basically spinning the wheel around, that's not acceptable, Mr. Di Gregorio. So like I always told you, Mr. Di Gregorio, if you're going to be a leader, you need to be transparent and you need to be consistent, neither of which are you.
Point of order, Mayor.
Mr. Wu.
Can I respond?
Point of order, Mayor.
Councilman Di Gregorio, you started your comments by saying that the price for this study seems to be high. My request would be just to have some basis behind, you know, we all want to, you know, spend, make sure that we are, you know, keeping in mind all costs that we're incurring from our residents' pockets. And, you know, twelve thousand dollars, if you just do a simple look on the internet, this is a multi-unit, big development project. That cost seems to be in range. And, you know, I think just questioning it without any basis, saying why it's high or not high, I think we just don't want to spend too much time there. At the end of the day, this traffic study is absolutely needed. If you don't think it's needed, feel free to speak up. We have to have it, it's a, there's a lot of cars coming through there for our mayor council meetings, et cetera, so.
Hey.
Win of order, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Katriss.
I'd like to expand as well, again, with Mr. Di Gregorio's comments about how much he cares about being heard. It was his, it was his duty, he was scheduled to sign all the Borough's bills today. He ignored emails, never responded to a couple of us, and I had to go in and 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 sign those bills for him. So I just find his comments to be very disingenuous. And I just wanted to thank you very much for wasting my time today, Mr. Di Gregorio, because it was you that was scheduled to do your duty, of which you didn't do. And I'd also like to add that we have a finance meeting tomorrow, and he he sits on this, he sits on the committee, and he's just ignoring our emails to even show up to these meetings. So I think perhaps, Mr. Di Gregorio, you should be a little bit more honest with the public instead of just trying to put up some sort of act for whoever it is that you may try to fool in the public, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Katriss.
May I respond, Your Honor?
Yeah, but I figure you're probably too busy putting out your, dear resident newsletters to actually do your duty. Go ahead.
No, I, look, I guess if you're all finished beating up on me, I I will say that I was available after my work hours to sign the bills. Thank you, Tim, for signing them for me today. I'm, I do have very serious obligations during the day, during my lunch hour. I do hope to be at the meeting tomorrow. And I don't know why I'm being beaten up by asking a simple question about a twelve thousand dollar traffic study on a short street in town, that's all.
Answer, 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 answer our emails, David. Hold up to your part of the responsibilities, that's all we ask to. It's really very simple, and having having this banter in front of the public is just really a waste of time. I'm really just hoping that we can just wrap, wrap up whatever Borough business needs to be done as quickly as possible.
Okay, well, let's move, let's forge ahead.
Let's do that, and just.
In good spirit.
That we all have jobs, we all have families, we all, we all make time for our duties. Ms. McMorro, were you done with your report?
On, on Craig Zimmerman's?
I know you're giving your.
I only, I only had one thing to add, Mayor, I didn't see it on Craig's list, and I just remembered. The other thing that I'm working on with you, Mayor, along with Andy, and I'm sure Craig is going to be helping Andy, is the PSENG project, which was also abandoned last year. And PSENG reached out to me at the beginning of the year, we've had several meetings. I know Mr. Hippelit attended the last meeting on our behalf. We were dealing with the, are you muted or somebody's muted? Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Sorry about that. He attended on our behalf, he relayed numbers to me that I'm not going to make public at this time, because I don't have it in writing yet, and I know that I will be anticipating on getting it from PSENG and be able to present it to the council for the April meeting, hopefully. So we're looking forward to working with them. It's got to do with they're anxious to redo their substation, and they're looking forward to working with us and as we are with them, so. That's the other thing. Mayor, in case I don't have one chance later to speak before you vote on the bills, I do have one check that I need to bring to your attention to hold, but that's for later on in the meeting.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Zimmerman, I wasn't sure if you were done with your presentation, but if you're not, please go ahead.
I am, I just wanted to put a cap on that. And twelve thousand dollars is approximately eighty man-hours or eighty person-hours, and the four thousand dollar budget is only three days. You can't do a traffic report in three days, it doesn't make any sense at all, you wouldn't. So just to give you a bit of an of an hour effort on our part, it would be eighty man-hours or, you know, let's say like one and a half weeks or so, where to turn us around.
Thank you so much.
Sure, no problem.
If you had to redo that work, we may have to request a refund from the fire engineers.
We've held that, we've held that.
We've held that, okay, good, all right, thank you.
I have one more question for Mr. Zimmerman, if I may, Your Honor. Okay, Craig?
Yes.
First of all, thank you. I hope you don't offense to my questions, but I do want to ask you, you know, I saw that there was a nice list of roads that are going to be paved this year. And again, you know, I'm fairly new at this, and I know that there are a lot of potholes that are not on those roads that you mentioned. Does the municipality have the capability of at least filling those potholes? Or is that something that we need to look into? And what municipal, is there a system in other municipalities that they have for residents to report potholes? So we can at least fill them up temporarily until the the street is paved?
Well, it depends on what road you're talking about. We're talking, for what I have on my list as Borough Engineer Representation is Summit Street coming down the Pike, Fifth Street coming down the Pike, and now with the Riverside Co-op, the nine streets that were identified by the DPW. But generally, potholes are taken care of at the DPW level. So you may want to just make a simple call to the to the DPW and see what kind of plans they may have in place to do spot pothole replacement.
Thank you.
Do other municipalities have a system of reporting potholes or some sort of on the internet where they can, you know, residents can say, oh, there's a pothole on my street?
Yes, I have seen that in in other websites. As I sit here right now, I don't recall which municipalities do have, but I've seen that at least on three occasions on different websites.
Let me, let me jump in, let me jump in here. So it's highly usual that after a, like, there'd be more potholes than usual. And our DPW does get around to filling the ones in on the roads that we control. There's also a county road and a state road that goes through town. And this is actually a good segue to a resident reporting system that we are looking at, and Councilman Wu has been instrumental in looking for a provider where residents could interact with the Borough to report quality of life issues such as potholes and litter. You know, Councilman Wu, this might be actually a good time for you to mention what you've been working on.
Sure. We got a referral into some other Borough administrators and other municipalities in New Jersey, and they mentioned there were several different pieces of different branded software that were popular among municipalities. There's one right now which we are looking at. It's a, it's a system called GovPilot. They gave me some preliminary information. I have a packet, it's, you know, the most basic module would be one, which is sort of a help desk for our residents. And it's something that, you know, would be very helpful for our Borough Administrator to administrate the various departments and give accountability for us as elected officials to our residents. So it's exciting, we're still in the research phase. You know, we have to look at the cost, David, as Councilman Di Gregorio, as you, as you mentioned, being cost-conscious, just making sure it's, you know, if it's based on the number of users, based on the number of residents in town, those are all things where we are looking at. And I think it'd be really helpful, we've never had a piece of software like this, you know, previously in Englewood Cliffs. I appreciate the mayor for his contacts at other towns to 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 bring these solutions to us to look at.
May I comment?
I just, I just want to make a favor, David, and I want to publicly thank the mayor of Red Bank, New Jersey, who's a friend and his Borough Administrator, spending time with Councilmen. They've, they've had a couple of different packages of software that they've worked with, and they've given us some good guidance there, so I publicly thank them.
Okay, no occasion. Mayor, may I comment, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, you know, maybe one way that we could save costs rather than purchasing a software is just to simply put on the website, um, an area where potholes can be reported and that would then automatically email. I know anyone familiar with, uh, web design. Uh, you just put a little window there and then you tell it what email it goes to. Um, I think, I don't know if the software program, uh, for potholes or, or anything. I mean, if someone has something to report, let them just go to the borough website, put in their report and then it could be triaged to the right departments. I think, uh, I think honestly in a town the size, uh, a, a software program is a little bit overkill and we should utilize, I think, what we have already. And I'm sure that that website would have that capability and at least it would give the residents um, a way of reporting things. And then if there would be a, you know, a paper trail that way. So that's just my suggestion. I've done that actually, um, in my own work for book suggestions in the library that, that I manage. Um, and people can just put in their book suggestions and hit send and it goes to me and it goes to the library secretary. So it's a very efficient way of doing it and it costs nothing.
So, Mr. Di Gregorio, I think you're, you're kind of missing the, the other side of the equation here, which is yes, residents should be able to report any quality of life issue, right? Uh, potholes or litter, anything. A- and then it, it should actually get filtered to that department head to be able to deal with. But then there should also be accountability. So the borough administrator would see and have a dashboard of what.
Correct.
And what's been taken care of and what hasn't and do the historic record of it. As opposed to just like, you know, some kind of like, um, I won't say slipshod, but just like email going all over the place. So.
Mayor. Mayor, if I can just interject, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. But there is a way of programming that, of putting multiple emails in there. So it will go to the borough administrator and will go to it. So it, there, and, and I'm glad to, I'm glad, you know, I, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I would be glad to show you how that's done. Um, it's very easy to download.
Yes, but you also want to create a dashboard and a record. So, um.
Uh, I don't, yeah, well, this, this creates email record. I don't want to get into the weeds of it. I just think that there's a way of doing it without, you know, spending a lot of money.
I'm sure Councilman Wu would be receptive to your, um, suggestion.
We're receptive to your ideas, David, and, um, we.
Let's talk.
We, we've talked with the company and they, they have a very basic module to start with. We can take baby steps as well, but we can, we can look at all solutions. So.
Great, all right. I, I would love to speak about it. Thanks.
Mr. Zimmerman, um, thank you very much for attending this evening. Um, I think we're, we're, um, we don't need your presence anymore. We appreciate you being here. And unless there's something else that you need to talk to us about. Mr. Zimmerman, can you hear me?
I think he's frozen.
Frozen, so, okay. Ms. McMorris, were you done with your, uh, report?
Yes, sir. I just have the, uh, check to pull later on.
Okay, thank you. And I, I also forgot to mention, I mentioned it last week at the special meeting, but we, it wasn't so well attended. I was invited by, uh, the, um, the, the lower school to, um, to read Cross America Day and I, I read Green Eggs and Ham. And, uh, so the kindergartners were, uh, a great audience. Um, later that day, I spoke to second and third-year law students, uh, at law stu-, at a law school and, uh, all virtually, of course, and, um, I, I must say that the kindergartners really held their own with the, uh, the law students. So, um, it was a nice day and I really appreciate the school inviting me to that every year. Um, next up are, um, correspondence. We didn't have anything of note. Uh, minutes. We are going to approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting from January 1st, 2021. Uh, can I have a motion to do that, please?
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone? Anybody abstaining or recusing? Okay, so those minutes are approved. Um, next up is the public portion of this meeting. So if there's a member of the public who wishes to speak, uh, we'll, we'll open the floor up to you now. Have a motion to do that? I'm sorry, can I have a motion to open to the public?
I'm moved.
Uh, can I have a second? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, um, so for the members of the public, uh, this is your opportunity to speak at this meeting. If you can, um, virtually raise your hand or, or wave at me. We'll try to get to you as we see your hand raised. Uh, if you're not on camera right now and you're calling in by phone, you're, you're also welcome to speak. Just, um, in, in all events, state your name and address. And if you're on phone, just unmute yourself if no one else is speaking and, um, I just try to jump in and, and we'll recognize you then. So, um, uh, Ms. Emma Guest, please, go ahead. So, okay, I've asked, um, Ms. Guest, I have asked, unmute yourself there.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Could you just state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Emma Guest Gonzalez. I'm at 55 Marjorie Terrace. I have a question about Resolution 74. It says authorized issuance of RFP for special counsel. What is the special counsel for?
Okay, um, Mr. Bernstein, would you handle that for me, please? I don't see Mr. Bernstein. He's rushing back to his computer. Hold on.
Sorry.
That's okay. Take your time. The, the question, I don't know if you heard the question, um, regarding Resolution 74. I didn't want to misspeak, so I'm asking you to, uh, explain what that resolution is for in terms of.
That resolution is to allow the completion of an ongoing employee investigation that needs to be finished. And where necessary for the opportunity to point somebody where there is a need where my office has a conflict.
So it's another lawsuit in town?
No, it's an investigation.
And that you can.
There's not, there's not another lawsuit in town. We're trying to actually get rid of some of them.
Okay, and, and so, and this is something that you cannot, um, do. It's so, we have to bring somebody in from the outside?
I cannot do it because I have a conflict in my multiple. I can't do an employee investigation when I'm the Labor Council and Borough Attorney.
Got it, got it. I was just, I was quick. That was, that was my, um, only one to ask. Thank you.
Eric, could you ma-, um, expand on that a little bit, um, a- as to the details?
No.
I mean, it seems like the pu-, public should really know.
I'm not, I'm councilman. I'm not going into who the investigation is on. You're aware of it. I know, and I'm not gonna go into it in the public session. And you and I have been going back and forth on this issue for the last couple of days.
That is, I, it's, that was, that was my, that was my question regarding Resolution 74. And then I wanted to, yeah, and then I wanted to make another comment. And this is something to, with regards to the way these meetings are held. And yesterday I attended a Board of Education meeting, uh, with, um, the City of Englewood, um, Board of Education and their meeting was a Zoom. And they had a very, um, I think it was a very nice way of running it is that if the public were, when they were given a chance to speak, there was a timer that showed how long everyone had to speak. Each person was given three minutes. Of course, that can be, can be adjusted accordingly, or you can give the public, you know, multiple moments to speak. But it, I think it made it, it was a visual clue and it just helped things run much more efficiently. So that's something perhaps the council would like, um, and the mayor would like to consider. And one final thing is that a, uh, Facebook group was recently started to, um, um, to get some dialogue going in town. And I had sent an invitation to, um, Ms. McMorris and other people in town. It's really open to everyone and it's completely non-political. It's to be able to discuss different issues. Um, quality of life is a, is a big thing too. Um, Mr. Di Gregorio pointed out that there was, you know, trash that was being left by the wayside walking around town and things like that. And I think it would be a good way since we cannot see each other, uh, one-on-one so much due to the pandemic restrictions. This might be a way for people to communicate. So I advise you all to look for that. Uh, if you did receive an invitation from me or from other people, I hope you can participate. Um, including you, Mr. Mayor, you know, you're very welcome to, to join in and, um, have some productive, polite discussions that would be.
I, I wasn't invited and I also don't recall.
It's able to, it's able to, you are able to find it. It's a public page. It's a public group. So anyone can, who looks for it can find it. It's called Respect and it's about citizens in Englewood Cliffs working together. Because once a month, the public monthly meetings are very, very useful. But this is a way to sort of continue the dialogue and just a friendly kind of discussion. And so all council members are welcome to, to do that. And if you have, if you can just look for it, it's a Facebook group. It's a public group. It's called Respect and it's, uh, for Englewood Cliffs, uh, resi-, residents. So I encourage you all to join that and I look forward to chatting with you there.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, in terms.
You're welcome.
In terms of, uh, timing, the public's participation in a public meeting. Um, I've always been opposed to limiting free speech. And you know what's gonna happen, Emma? If, if I say everybody gets three minutes or five minutes or 10 minutes, it's never gonna be right. So.
I'm.
Rather, um, let me just finish. I, I'd rather just let people speak, uh, and I'm always available if they want to call me and I don't need to be on Facebook, uh, with, with Mark Zuckerberg, uh, monitoring everything. Feel free to call me. Feel, feel free to email me, text me. Um, but I'm not gonna limit. That was a, I'm not gonna limit speech to three minutes. And that was a problem I had with Aversa O Sabari and, and, um, you know, all of them last year is that they actually tried to do that and it, it just aggravates the situation more because then people, then people feel like, hey, wait a minute, you know, you're, you're limiting my speech.
This, this was, this was, this was more of a question of how, helping the meetings run more smoothly. The idea was having, if you have the timer there, people can see how much, uh, you know, how long the discussions are going. And so we can help facilitate discussions, not to, to, to remove anybody's right to free speech or anything like that. It's part of facilitate the discussion. And of course, you know, people would be able to, you know, speak for longer than three minutes, for 10 minutes if they want to. But this becomes a way just to, to, so people can keep on, can keep on track. Because sometimes things can get a little long-winded. It was just a suggestion. And I, um, I'm sure you won't take it the wrong way. So thank you for listening. Thank you.
I'm asking you, what happens at three minutes?
Excuse me?
What happens at three minutes?
No, the idea is not to cut anybody off. The idea is if you have a timer going that at those Board of Ed meetings, they had it set for three minutes. That people, they tend to be, you, since you know what, how long you've been speaking, people can be a little more concise and concentrated with their comments. It was just a suggestion. So thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Can I comment on Emma's suggestion? Your Honor? I, I think it's a good suggestion to keep the, the meetings moving. And the fact that, you know, that people are heard. You know, I have a tendency of droning on and if I had a time limit, it certainly would help me in my communication. So you're gonna have more crisp communication. And then people won't be muted, hopefully, um, and people will be heard. Everyone has a right to be heard. And I think three minutes is a pretty generous amount of time. Um, so I, I'm in agreement with that, um, with Emma, and I think it's a good idea. Um, and.
You can make a motion later. You can, you can make a motion for that. And by the way, the, the muting is not because of the time. The muting is because you're talking over people. But if you want later on, when we come out of public, you can make a motion for, uh.
Well, you know, when I have the floor, uh, Mayor, when I have the floor, sometimes you talk over me, but I don't have the luxury to mute you. And I wouldn't mute you because I want to hear what you say.
Well, based on the things that you mail to people, you would do worse than mute me, but that's another issue. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to be heard? Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
I'm moved.
I'm sorry, there's a hand.
No, there's somebody there.
Uh, Ms. Alvarado, uh, please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Yes, hi, I'm Wendy Alvarado, 726 Floyd Street. And I had a question about, um, the dog park. It's anyone looking into whether it is a need in town and how to fulfill that need?
So, a good question. We are actually, um, it, it's had some starts and stops. I know at one time there was a dog park and, um, I was talking to, um, the acting borough administrator about that. In that situation years ago, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, uh, it, it used to be where the current batting cages are and uh, as unfortunately, it's often happens, uh, people weren't picking up after their dogs. So we are actually looking to, um, redo the entire park and, and hopefully find a solution to having a portion of it be a, a dog, uh, park, um, probably divided between, uh, large dogs and small dogs. Um, and, um, I, I, I wish I could take my dog to a dog park, but, um, as some, some dogs in this town are, are not well-adjusted to other dogs. But, um, I hope everyone else will be able to enjoy it, um, with their dogs. So thank you for raising that.
Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry.
Um, no, I'm just saying, I think there are theories I need for a dog park. Many of us have dogs in this town. And that would be a way for us to, to communicate with one another. And a number of us go to the park in the morning and we get together and talk and and some people let their dogs loose where the kids usually play in the summer. And, and we're thinking that it is a need. So I am glad that you're looking into it. It would be a great thing for the town as most people in town don't have kids, actually. We have dogs.
Yeah, so, so, uh, we, uh, our, our, our dog is our new child right now because our kids are grown up. But, um, you know, we're actually looking to see how other towns, um, who, who do it well, how they do it. Uh, so that we, you know, it'll look great for a week and then it'll be a mess after that and, um.
I think Fort Lee, Fort Lee has a good one. Tena Fly is not as organized. Like I go on all over with my dog. Um, but I think Fort Lee will be one to look into. It's, it's not that big and, and it's well-run. So.
All right, well, we'll, we'll probably stop by there and take a look. Uh, Mr. Di Gregorio, you want to say something?
Yes, I, I would love to. First of all, thank you for the comment and I think it's a a great idea to have a ballpark among beautification and it would beautify this town in, in, in many ways. Um, I do agree, uh, that we should look at other towns. I think, um, Mayor uh, had mentioned that and Wendy, you had mentioned that also. Um, I also did, and I don't know why I have to Oprah this. I, I was told I have to Oprah. Uh, I'd like to have a communication with all the dog owners in town. So, um, in order to get their input. Um, so I've Oprah'd the list and I'd like to have some sort of communication with them. And I do agree again with, uh, with the mayor, uh, that, um, there should be, or Wendy, I don't know, you said there, I forget who said. You gotta have a big dog area and a small dog area and it has to be well-planned. And if we do enough uh, planning and research in the beginning and we have input from enough people, it can be a great success. So I would love to work with all dog owners in town. Uh, I'm a new dog owner in town. Um, so to come up with something really unique, like someone had mentioned to me that the pea gravel, um, and I think Tena Fly has the pea gravel, is not comfortable, uh, to the, to the pads on the dogs. So, you know, we have to look at the terrain. We have to look at a lot of things. Um, so I think it's a challenge. And, and I, I feel confident that we could have a dog park that would be, um, you know, set the standard for other towns. At least I hope so.
Do you have a dog, Mr. Di Gregorio?
Yes, we, my wife brought one home from Taiwan. It's a Taiwan mountain dog, as I mentioned to you on the phone, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So we have one permanently now.
A, a Formosan mountain dog?
Formosan mountain dog. Yes, they're goofy and lovable. And, um, it's great that, uh, um, a stray dog that was rescued in Taiwan has found a home here in Englewood Cliffs.
My dog was rescued in Alabama and it looks like a Formosan mountain dog for some reason. So I don't know what.
Okay, well, good. Maybe they'll get together. Maybe they'll love each other. We need more love.
It, it, it's been hard to find anyone to love Daisy other than us, but, uh, we'll try. I, I know, uh, Ms. McMorris got a, uh, very gentle dog also.
Yes.
Ms. Alvarado, were you finished? I'm sorry, you're.
You're muted.
Yeah, I am. Sorry. I just, I just remembered. I'm very close to the park and so we, can we add more benches to that park? There's like three benches. So like in a summer day, like. So like in a summer day like last year, it's difficult to find a bench, especially for our seniors. So I don't know what the rules are for that, but I feel that we need more benches. You guys can look into that as well.
Yeah, we should definitely do more benches, but we what we also want to do is a covered pavilion as well and um you know, a cabana show and some other things, so that it's a whole do-over. Thank you. I appreciate your point.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Thanks, Wendy.
Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed? Okay, great. Thank thank you uh to the public. Appreciate your comments. We are going to go and move through our agenda. Actually doing very well on time tonight. But next on the agenda, uh our resolutions, uh 2021 uh 69 uh resolution, amending resolution 21 dash 50, payment of claims. Um we're gonna go through each one and do a separate roll call. Got a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Um, Madam, could you take a vote, please? On the payment of claims, um there is uh one check for New Horizon.
Different different list, William.
So um councilman, that that that's coming down at that 69A on the next page of the agenda.
Sorry about that. Yep, okay.
Good, thanks. So can I have a roll call, please? Just to be clear, did the clerk uh capture the mover and the seconder?
I I had I heard Katrubis and De Gregorio.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
What are we voting on, to pay the bills or to pass the resolution?
Now, if you if you have the agenda in front of you, it's number 69, resolution amended.
I got it right here. Hold on a second. Uh 69, resolution, bop bop bop, okay. So, yeah, yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, um number 70, award contract for tree pruning and removal.
I'll move.
Second.
Councilperson's Wu? Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Resolution 71, request approval to defer school taxes.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes. Number 72, authorization to enter into Riverside Cooperative Agreement.
I'm moved.
Second.
We're all called.
I'm sorry, who moved it, please?
I did, federal.
Thank you. Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Number 73, memorialize the payment of legal bills to Florio Perucci, Steinhardt Capelli, Tipton and Taylor LLC, which had been previously paid but unapproved by the borough as to the matter of Cranjack versus Gloria O. L. Docket number B E R L 003775 dash 20.
I'll move. Second.
Roll call, please?
Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Could I ask for a little more information on this?
This is It would be my pleasure, councilman.
Thank you.
Apparently, last year, the majority members of the council were sued by the mayor regarding record issues. And for reasons known only to fill in the blank, apparently retained the Florio Perucci firm without a resolution authorizing such, without a not-to-exceed resolution authorizing such, and went ahead and paid four bills totaling more than $20,000 uh without the necessary paperwork signed off by multiple borough officials. So I am trying to clean that up and go back to the firm because I have a question about one of the bills. But I'm trying to simply clean up what was left from last year.
Okay.
By health.
Okay.
I I didn't hear Ms. McMorris. I'm sorry.
The borough attorney advised me to look to to look to make sure that that all of the not-to-exceeds were in order as it should be. And what we we found is that uh just like this, that many bills were paid without the proper authorization, even though there were sign-offs by council members and other individuals to pay them. And they were not, the proper procedures were not followed, and we are cleaning that up.
How do you feel with the De Gregorio?
Uh I'm going to vote uh because I don't have enough information on this and um I'm going to vote.
You read the resolution, councilman?
I did read the resolution. But what was the nature of the uh of the, why did they um, why did they of um?
Why did they? I can't answer that question. None of them are here. All I can tell you is they were sued. They chose to retain counsel, which they had the right to do. There's a procedure for doing so, which you periodically like to remind me of. And apparently didn't happen. And on top of that, to compound the problem, not only was the firm hired, but the firm had bills paid without a not-to-exceed resolution, without approval. Four sets of bills, a total $20,656.75, one of which I think is an over billing, which I need to address separately.
Okay, but the suit was initiated by?
It was initiated by, the issue is not what who initiated the suit, councilman, or what? This is not an issue of they didn't have the right. The issue was there's a process which people like to remind me of around here. And the process here is we pass resolutions hiring counsel, which includes a not-to-exceed figure and Ms. Duffy is very particular, as is Ms. McMorro on those resolutions.
Right.
And as opposed to happen, didn't happen here. And on top of that, not only did it not happen, bills got submitted and bills got paid.
Okay, so I realized, yeah, I realize you're trying to clean it up, but I I still it wasn't clear to me what the suit was about, uh that's all.
What the suit was about, councilman, is immaterial. Because whatever the suit was about, they were named in their capacity, so it has no bearing on this issue.
Okay, well, I'm gonna just uh, I'll just abstain on this, but I I I think it's in the public interest to know what the details of this.
The public, the public was well aware, councilman, last year when the suit got brought. Uh it was a public suit. It was brought by the mayor relative to actions taken by the majority council members last year. He sued them in there individually, not at the borough. And I don't think the public, the public was aware of it. It was not like this came out of nowhere, but
Well, I, you know, I I'll just go ahead and abstain, but I will make a comment that I do think that in at moving forward, that we have to try to avoid any of this, any of this kind of suit. Because the, again, it's, you know, we're paying the bill and uh
Councilman, I deeply appreciate, I I think you will appreciate, I know the minister wants to say something, that I am gonna do everything in my power as borough attorney to try to keep the legal fees for the borough of Englewood Cliffs well below what's been paid the last couple of years for the legal fees. And in terms of litigation, to try to limit it as much as possible, but you can only limit so much. So if we all work together, we should hopefully resolve it. But all I'm trying to do tonight is get something cleaned up so that when the auditor comes in and makes a point about it, as he should, there's at least something we've done to try to ameliorate it.
So the council people, are they not covered by an attorney somehow? I mean, are there?
They are intent, they are allowed to be covered. Guys, hold on. Ms. McMorra had the floor next. Sorry, sorry, your honor.
Um, Mayor, um Councilman De Gregorio, and if you need help with this, I'd be more than happy to bring this further to you online. Um in listening to you, it's very clear to me that you're not understanding what the borough attorney is trying to explain to you on this resolution. And there's a similar resolution that's coming up on number 81. And there was one last month and there may be more that we're going to uncover that wasn't done properly. The issue here is that there is a process and you're on the finance committee, right? There's a process that must be followed for paying vendors, all right? The procedure was not followed properly. You're looking at what the lawsuit was about. That has nothing to do with the subject matter at hand here. The process to pay this vendor was not followed properly. We have an obligation to clean this up. Now, if you don't want to clean it up, then you know, that's, I I just want to try and help you to understand what what you're saying, but we need, we have an obligation to clean it up.
Okay, I understand that, Carol, but I just
Order, order. You voted. We're in the middle of a roll call.
Please go to the I'm gonna change my vote to to no, okay, no.
Good, fine.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but
You don't have the floor anymore. Let's continue with the vote. We have to move on.
Okay. Katrubis?
Yes.
Thank you.
It passes. Resolution 74, authorize issuance of RFP for special counsel. You have a motion, please?
Move it.
You have a second?
Second.
Give a roll call.
Councilperson's Wu?
Councilman Wu?
I think we lost them.
Oh, hold on a second. He's trying to get back in. I'm sorry, councilman. I didn't realize you dropped off. Where are, we just went down to 74 authorized issuance of RFP for special counsel and we are voting. I'm sorry, councilman, did you hear what I said?
He's, I'm trying to unmute him.
Sorry about that. My computer, for whatever reasons, dropped me off a couple of times today. Okay, I'll I'll repeat. We're on number 74, authorized issuance of RFP for special counsel. We had a motion, we had a second, and and there's a vote. Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Again, here's a resolution that nobody in the public knows anything about. And as far as I'm concerned, every dime that goes out to be paid needs to be accountable, needs, the public has a right to know all the details. So um I'm gonna vote no on this and I do think that the public really needs to question this. And there are other things that I could say about this. And I think it's tremendously unfair uh that there is a, there is a double standard. And I could elaborate on that. There is a double standard had by, with all due respect, your honor, by you, because you have said exactly the opposite about somebody else in the past. And that's all I'll I'll say. So a resounding no, and I hope that other council people find it in their hearts also to vote no.
Katrubis?
Yeah, I I just want to expand on David's comments for a moment. There's all, there is a double standard, David. And perhaps you should think about dropping your slip and fall lawsuit against the public uh when you fell on borough property, but uh I guess we'll cover that at another time. I vote yes. Thank you.
So David, if um if you didn't have double standards, you'd have no standards. So you know, you you could rage all you want, but we're just trying to clean the mess that you and your fellow travelers on the council last year created. And you know, the the public entrusts us to do the right thing. They've always been transparent, they've always been consistent. And you will learn that without those two, it's a dead end in leadership. If you prefer to be on the side of the public and not on council, you're free to leave council, but we need leaders on council. Okay?
Can I refund, uh, your honor?
We're on number 75. I was rebutting to you. Number 75.
So I'm not
Affirming endorsement of the borough's application of a CD BG grant.
I'll move.
Second.
Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
I should have mentioned that this was, because it's confusing to the public, it's the Burton County Community Development Grant that's being applied for here. And we use shorthand on the agenda, so I apologize for that. We'll spell it out next time. Number 76, award contract and authorized signing of the agreement with Colliers Engineering and Design. This is the parking study.
I'm moved.
Second.
Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
I still think $12,000 is a little too much for, is this the uh the study for Mazer, right?
Yes, this is the parking, this is the parking study, councilman.
Okay, so you know what? I I would be glad to do it for 50 bucks and I'll stand on Clinton and and uh count the cars.
So so you
No.
All right, well, Mr. De Gregorio, it's more than counting cars, okay? It's actually engineers, of which you are not, solving a problem that we have to solve for this town on the affordable housing matters that you actually overwhelmingly support. So why would you stand in the way of an affordable housing project on Hudson Terrace?
Well, may I respond, Mayor?
The way of a project that we need to do.
Can I respond?
Go ahead and respond.
Okay, well, first of all, I am absolutely thrilled that the, that you're all in a lot step and getting the affordable housing settlement executed. That makes me really happy because we don't have to spend any more money for $1,500,000, you know, nearly $1,000 uh per per household. So although you were railing against it, with all due respect, I am so thrilled that you're, that that Ms. McMorro is working so hard to comply with the Affordable Housing Settlement uh and that we will finally put this behind us and can concentrate on other things. So you know what? Maybe I should just change my vote and vote yes, but you know, I still, let let me just vote yes, but I will, and and I'll take your advice.
Oh, let me change.
Yes, but wait a second. Ho- hold on, can I finish? I'll vote yes, but I still think with comment, it's it's outrageous, $12,000 for a traffic study. And that's all I have to say, but I'm thrilled that everyone's working so hard and moving things ahead.
Well, I enjoy your flip-flopping.
All right, so you're
That's okay.
Councilman
Yeah, I'm voting. I'm voting yes.
Here are how you vote. I just want you to be a leader.
On the advice of the mayor, I'm voting yes. Thank you, Mario, for your advice. I'll take it.
Katrubis?
Yes.
Okay, uh it passes. Authorized Colliers Engineering and Design, Inc., DBA Mazer Consulting to provide professional engineering and architectural services as to the interior renovations within the Police Department Building. That was a good description, okay?
We tried.
I move that.
Second.
Counsel persons, Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
Okay, it passes. Number seventy-eight, authorizing release of performance bond of FCA Realty LLC. And the acceptance of maintenance bond. For three thirty, three forty, Sylvan Avenue, in the borough of Englewood Cliffs. You have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We're open.
Counsel persons, Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
We're on, what are we on, seventy-eight? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Seventy-eight, yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
Passes. Number seventy-nine, authorization to transfer appropriation reserves.
Second.
We're open, please?
Wu? Okay, I'm sorry, counsel persons, Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
Apple. Number eighty, authorized the borough clerk. To advertise for a full-time public works laborer.
I move that.
Second.
Counsel persons, Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Is this for an additional employee or a replacement employee?
Replacement.
Replacement?
Yes.
And I hope we get a great person to join that department, yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
Hey, it passes. Number eighty-one, authorization to increase the not-to-exceed amount in twenty twenty for Harbor Consultants. Eric, is that cleanup in twenty twenty?
Yes, it's a cleanup. We, it's the sixth not-to-exceed for Mike. So moved.
Second.
Counsel persons, Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Sabari? I'm sorry, Katrubis?
Yes.
Passes. Number eighty-two, authorized recreational facility permit to Marcos Sango. For an organized basketball group.
Point of order, mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I just wanted to, I had a few comments regarding this, just to bring the, the current council up to speed with this resolution. First, I wanted to thank several people for making this happen. I'd like to thank the Borough Administrator, Ms. McMorro, for guiding us through this, through the appropriate legal channels. And basically made this happen within one or two days, and she made it all happen at the same time with. Working within the stringent timeframe of deadlines with. The affordable housing project, so thank you very much, Ms. McMorro. I also want to thank. Mr. Bernstein and his law firm, specifically Mr. Philip George. Who really stepped up. I think that this is a fantastic ad for the community, and I want to thank. One of the residents, who's also a father here in town, Mr. Marcos Sango. Who took it upon himself to spearhead this, this activity. And with the help of everybody, I'm happy to announce that we will be. Bringing three, kicking off a ten-game outdoor basketball league from April through May. It's gonna be three teams, about eight to ten children. Five grade, fifth grade boys, sixth and seventh grade boys team. And a fifth and sixth grade girls team, all total. Twenty-five of our, twenty-five to thirty of our youngsters will be having the opportunity to play outside. And thank you very much for making this happen. It's really fantastic, and I hope that the council supports it. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Okay, was there a motion made yet?
No.
Mr. Katrubis, would you like to move it?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Counsel persons, Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yeah, I'm delighted about this, and congratulations to Mr. Sango. I will make a comment, though, that I hope that all players have equal playing time. It's about playing, and it's about the students, or the children, about the, the, the children. And it's not necessarily about winning, it's about giving every. Every child equal playing time on the field, yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman Katrubis, and Mr. Sango's on, just gave us the thumbs up. Let us know what the schedule is, so we could go and watch. Well, that is if we're allowed to watch, I'm not sure. Is this gonna be outdoor or indoor?
Outdoors.
Okay. Well, you have a great basketball court there at Johnson to play at.
Yeah, it's great. Wish you luck, wish them all luck.
Yeah, great. Number eighty-three, authorized execution of the Michaels Group Agreement. For the borough's proposed sixty-five unit all affordable development, and. Here's a point where I just like to stop before we get a motion on this. So this is the affordable housing project on Hudson Terrace. This is a project that Ms. McMorro and Councilman Wu and I worked on back in. Early to mid two thousand eighteen. As the, of the affordable housing project for the borough. And it's, you know, finally coming to fruition. It should have been done a long, long time ago. But two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty are what we'll call on council here as the lost years. Okay, and I thank Borough Administrator McMorro. And the council members who work with her, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Jedzniak, who's not here right now. For getting that through. You know, and, and I've always made it clear that we will comply with whatever the law is, whether or not we agree with the law. That was always my intention, and it's always what I stated. You know, Karen Geiger and Katie Sobko, they write things that are just not true. But you could look at every single public meeting from the day I became mayor, I always said, we will comply with the law. Just like any law, it's the law, we will comply with it, and now we are doing that. And, and if, I don't see the Beatty Patavanna lawyers on here tonight. They're probably still trying to figure out how to work their laptops. But, you know, these guys are always watching us. We are doing what we're supposed to be doing. And we're doing it for everyone's benefit. So we're moving on, and I hope that the council will approve this unanimously tonight. Okay, have a motion, please.
All moves.
Second.
Counsel persons, Wu?
I, I just want to make a quick comment, just congratulate everybody involved, led by Acting Borough Administrator. Carol, for us to get this done here in early March, it was just, is, is, is a big feat for us. And we finally have, you know, affordable housing coming to Englewood Cliffs. We've always talked about it, haven't had it for forty years. This is, this is big for us. It's a project, it will not be an eyesore on Hudson Terrace, it will be a beautiful-looking project, and. You know, it, it, it's just something all of us should be very, very proud of. So, thank you again, everyone involved, council, Borough Administrator, the mayor, all the council, fellow council members. Congrats again. My vote is yes, and hopefully everyone else unanimously approves, as the mayor mentioned.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
I'd also like to make a comment on the line of William. First of all. You know, listen, you have to be accurate in the, where you give credit. And I am thrilled that Carol McMorro has been working day and night to comply with the law. And, and I hope, mayor, you know, you won't mute me, I have the floor, is that okay? I'm gonna continue, I'm not finished. And I think that in order to be totally accurate. We have to give huge credit to Debbie Sabari. Debbie Sabari, that's her field, and she knows the questions to ask. She spearheaded this, you know, over the last two years. She's gone, you know, put up with all kinds of abuse. But I know that her heart was for the town. It's something that we had to do, as mayor said, we had to comply with the law. And I'm thrilled that we're finally complying with the law, although. The last election, there was a campaign to fight affordable housing, so it's kind of weird that, you know, we're turning, you know, that the. And I hate to say Republicans, I wish there was no Democrat and Republican on the municipal level, it makes it tremendously inefficient. And I, I just think that in order to be really accurate, we have to thank Debbie Sabari. And those that have spearheaded the settlement. I wish we had settled in two thousand nineteen, we would have saved the taxpayers a pot full of money. And I'm glad, listen, we have to do it. We can absorb, we can give a good home, as William said, it's gonna be well-constructed, we'll see to it that it's safe, it's not gonna be. A fire trap, I mean, that's gonna be my mission for the short time that I'll be on, on the council. So I want to congratulate Debbie Sabari for spearheading this. I am thrilled that Mayor Cranjack and, and hopefully everyone's gonna vote unanimously, Tim. And Mark, and who else am I missing? And Raymond will all vote for this, and I'll vote for it, and I will vote yes. And I look forward to, to working with my Republican friends to make this. To make Englewood Cliffs lovable again, and a great town.
Katrubis?
Yes.
So thank you.
Mayor, I think, I think the Borough Administrator wants to say something.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. McMorro, I'm sorry, this is your.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I want to thank all of the council for voting yes. Um, I. The only reason that I'm gonna make this statement, mayor, is because. I think it's really important for the public. And for the people sitting up on council to always do your best when you make statements to make accurate ones. And because we have a newspaper, there's a reporter on the line, and they report, and they give soundbite quotes. And they never check their facts before they utilize those soundbites. That being said. Councilman De Gregorio, and I would never have brought this up if you had not. The councilperson that spearheaded this project was me. If you want to know, and you want to know the facts, because what happened was, the property next door to the Borough Hall. The for-sale sign was being hammered into the ground, and I happened to be at Borough Hall. And I immediately called them, we called an emergency meeting, and we bought that property. Had we not bought the property next door to the Borough Hall. This project would never be able to be in existence. And from that day forward, myself, Councilman Wu, and the mayor worked tirelessly. With Jeff Serenium, and with Mike Mastrata, and Bob Powell. To put this project together. Fortunately, like the mayor said, there was some time that went by where it. I don't know what happened, I'm not gonna even speculate. After that, what I inherited in January. Was a project that was not going to work. So I'm not gonna fault Councilwoman Sabari for anything, because I don't know who's caused that. But we did not have a project that worked. And thank God, the Michaels Group, along with Mike Mastrata, Andy Hippelit. Chief of Police, Fire Chief. Mike Jedzniak, Eric Bernstein, and everyone else worked together. To fix what we needed to do. To get it to be an even better project. So, I just need to state the facts. You need to put politics aside, please, and just.
So, may I, may I respond? May I respond? I, I just want to respond, it's just a short comment.
I actually, then, are you done, Ms. McMorro?
I actually was in the middle of a sentence, and he interrupts.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, it's, it's not healthy for the back and forth, and Councilman De Gregorio was not on the council then, doesn't know the facts, he wasn't in closed session. Not gonna talk about what went on in closed session during that time period, but those of us that were there know what happened, and that is what happened, Councilman, so please. Report the facts, thank you.
So the MOU was, can I, may I, may I speak, your honor? First of all.
You can, but just get your facts straight.
Yeah, very quickly. I, I do believe the MOU at, at one point was only fifteen units, so, anyway, just that aside, look. You know. Everybody worked towards this. Nobody should be a hog for the credit. Let's share in the love. Let's, you know, it's not efficient for the town to, to, to be contentious. Look, you know what? I, I think that we, we, you know, we really. You know, every, every credit goes to, and, you know, you're talking about a councilwoman that was under fire. But she knew all the right questions to ask, and you know what, mayor, you really should give credit where credit is due, and heal the town. Heal the town, really, I, I challenge you to do that, on behalf of all the residents.
Okay, let me have the floor. I'm glad you challenged me. There are misstatements in what you said, factual misstatements. I know. New Jersey dot com is on, and our other prolific journalist, Karen Geiger's on here as well. So look, just to be clear. This is a one hundred percent affordable housing project. Now, the reason why I always supported this one is, David, because no one makes money on this. None of your cronies, none of their political campaigns, no one makes money on a hundred percent affordable. Housing projects. This is the true. Basis for affordable housing, that many, many years ago, before New Jersey became the cesspool that it is with affordable housing and corruption. This is what it was intended to do, provide housing. To lower-income people. That's different than what happened at eight hundred Sylvan. Eight hundred Sylvan is market-based with twenty percent affordable housing. Which means that there is a ton of money. Available to buy people like you and your cronies and everyone else in this state. Right? If they wanted to, and sometimes it does happen. There's a lot, let me finish, there's a lot of money flying around. And, and which makes it even worse for us to understand, how can you possibly have six hundred units? Or four hundred fifty units on a, on a property that used to be a corporate campus with an outlet onto Floyd Street? That's a different issue. Now, I'm glad you brought up Councilwoman Sabari, because you said this is her field. Her field is the market-based. The for-profit housing, the for-profit project, not affordable housing. Okay, so I think that might have had something to do with her desire to get so involved with eight hundred Sylvan. Okay, because she was very quiet about Hudson Terrace.
Can I respond, please? Can I respond?
Let me finish, let me finish. So, again, I support this project because it's one hundred percent affordable housing. This is the true intention of affordable housing in New Jersey and anywhere else, is to provide housing. Alright, and with housing, you have to provide services as well. Because you have to develop a community, not just modernize it and provide better housing. There's a lot of countries out there that are modern but not developed, right? We, we strive to make Englewood Cliffs great again, okay? You want to make it lovable, that's fine. We've always been lovable. You know why? Because our families love us, our friends love us. It's not about love, it's about doing things better, okay? And that's where we're.
Point of order, mayor?
Yes.
I also want to add that after two years, we're back in the same place where we were. The public needs to understand that we had this affordable housing plan. And the only thing that's changed now, between, that's changed two years ago, is. And the only thing that's changed now between, that's changed two years ago, is Ms. Sabari, who spearheaded all of this, has gotten us four and a half million dollars deeper into the hole. And she was responsible for secretly negotiating a deal. So that probably might have something to do with why she might not even be here today. I don't know. But whatever the case may be, it's that you need to be accurate when you make these statements, Mr. De Gregorio. I don't know if if it's perhaps you just don't understand the history of what has happened. It's in all the court documents. 800 Sylvan made it very clear that Albert Wunsch had approached them back in January of 2019 to secretly negotiate a deal regardless of what the public thinks. Okay, that's, that's, those are, those are in court documents. So um, you know, I just think that we need to stop the uh, the fake narratives and just continue with borough business because it really is just a waste of the public's time. And I don't even think that they want to hear about what has happened.
I, Tim, I wholeheartedly agree. Can I have the floor, Your Honor?
Uh, yes, I just want to thank Mr. Lubanski who's also on on this meeting right now. Thank you for working with us. And we look forward to continuing to partner with you on on this and other projects. Hi, how are you? Actually, I'm going to unmute you so you could, if you want to say anything.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we're very excited to be a part of the project. Uh, we have a great deal of experience throughout the country, but most importantly, in the state of New Jersey. Uh, we spent a lot of time in responding to the Borough's RFP and uh, working with the Borough's professionals. I think that um, in my experience, having worked uh, in numerous municipalities in in New Jersey, uh, the experience has been incredibly positive. The professionals have been a a pleasure to work with, very effective, very efficient. Um, and that's a great way to kick off a development like this. We're excited. We have a great presence in New Jersey and we're going to um, you know, bring the services like you, like you mentioned, Mayor, and um, uh, along with high quality, beautiful housing uh, that we really think will transform uh, the area and have a huge positive impact. So thank you very much and we're happy to be a part of it.
Thank you for staying up tonight. Take care.
Yep. My pleasure.
All right.
Point of order, uh, Mayor? Yeah, was Jonathan with Michaels? Who was he?
Yes, Jonathan is with the Michaels Organization.
Michaels, you know, even when I was on uh, in the last, in December, you're you're highly thought of that, that you put quality first and and I think we're fortunate to have uh, to have you uh, as uh, as a partner. So so thank you. Um, but I did want to just, you know, revisit. First of all, I agree 100% with Tim. We've got a forge ahead. But we also have to be accurate about the past. And, you know, if we had settled in 2019 summer and I remember the big crowd up there, if we had settled, it would have been a different story. We'd have saved the taxpayers a whole ton of money.
David.
But we didn't, no, wait a second, I'm not finished. I don't have the luxury of.
You should have done it. Take ownership of it.
Well, you know what?
Wants each player to have equal time on the field, right? You you really dominated the conversation tonight in terms of time.
I don't think so. Have I?
I I I'm ready to move on. Uh, we have a lot.
And I think we all are. And look, I think it's just important that, you know, in the future, I am delighted now. I think I've got the knack of not being muted and I hope I will not be muted again. Um, and I, you know, I really think that it's time to move on and I I think we would be remiss in not being accurate about the past. And that's just very important to me.
David, you have to be concise. You keep saying the same things over and over. Councilman Wu, please take the.
Point of order, I, you know, David, I know you want to um, have a narrative where Councilwoman Sabari gets some credit. I mean, I've been on council, this is year number five, and I haven't ever been to a regular mayor and council meeting where we've had a council member just flat out missing from the meeting uh, with no communication to any of their peers, um, to the Borough Clerk, to the Borough Administrator. Um, it's just very odd, especially considering how, you know, it might be an emergency, but um, you know, I I hope, I certainly hope it's not. Uh, but I think we have a responsibility as council members. This is a regular meeting is set for the entire year. And um, it's truly, you know, this is the closing of uh, closing and the beginning of uh, you know, something new for us in terms of affordable housing. So.
May I respond? And I'm not dominating really. But William, William.
I'm cheering, David. We're moving on.
Okay, no, but I just, may I just, just to, just a minute to respond. It's not fair. Point of order, Robert's rule.
Amendment Acclaim's Resolution, uh, 69A, 11th, 2021 through March 10th, 2021. Uh, I know that the number is going to change because the Borough Administrator is about to take a check off or added, taking it off. Okay.
It went off, yeah. Okay, uh, I'm going to ask for one of the council members to pull. Uh, I'll give you the check number, Mayor. It's a check 50001. The amount is $2,447. So that amount would need to amend the, that's out of the current fund, Mayor, and it would need to amend the total bill list uh, by that amount as well. Correct, Mr. Bernstein?
Yes, the current fund and the total bill amount must be reduced by that amount.
It was 2,400, I'm sorry, 40?
2,447, check number 50001.
Okay.
It's a check, Mayor, for New Horizon Communications. Uh, we have plenty of time to still pay this bill. I just need to do a little more research on it and it has to do with, I don't want there to be duplicative services having to do with the other funds.
Point of order, Peter.
I'm sorry, hold on a second. So our our new total is 4,857,045.24.
Uh, let me add it for you. I I I'm sorry. I'll I'll double check that number, Mayor.
Just give us a minute.
Uh, did you get 4,857,045.24?
Yes, that's the number. Okay.
And the amount have to change on the top, right, on current fund?
Yes.
The current fund would also have to be amended.
Okay, so the current fund will be amended by that amount. The new total that we're approving tonight is 4,857,045.24. Can I have a motion, please, to approve that?
Hold on.
Hold on.
Madam Clerk, did you catch the mover in the?
I didn't hear the second.
I I seconded.
Thank you.
Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubes?
Sorry, I'm.
He's muted.
You could unmute yourself.
Thank you. Yes.
All right, um, thank you, everyone. Next up is ordinances 2021. Uh, this is 21 dash zero two with a second reading and public hearing on um, March 10th, 2021. That's today. This is the second reading. It's an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 30 of the Borough Code entitled, quote, zoning, close quote, most notably Section 30 dash 23, entitled, quote, stormwater management, close quote, by replacing the prior section entitled, quote, stormwater management, close quote.
Point of order, Mayor, point of order.
Uh, I'm I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I do this right. Mr. Bernstein, do I, um, do I do the?
Motion open to public.
I did a motion open to the public now, right?
Yes.
All right. Have a motion to open to the public?
It's a point of order, point of order, point of order before your motion. Point of order. Do I get that, Eric?
I don't think, I'm I'm asking Eric and he's telling me I have to open to the public first.
The the motion open and then we'll address the point of order.
Thank you.
All moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, so open, this is to open to the public.
Mr. De Gregorio's point of order, Your Honor.
All in favor? I didn't hear.
Hi.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, Mr. De Gregorio, what's your point of order before the public speaks?
Yeah, point of order, um, before, if I recall correctly and accurately, you accused me and Ms. Sabari of uh, having cronies and.
No, no, you you're mistaken. We're doing an ordinance now? You could only speak to this ordinance.
I'll speak to the ordinance in a second. And I think we, we should pass the ordinance.
All right.
But you slandered me and Ms. Sabari with your accusation.
You're you're, you're out of order, okay? We are opening to the public for the specific purpose of ordinance 21 dash zero two. And the public is welcome to comment on on this and only this ordinance right now. Um, I don't make the rules. Those are the rules. So if anyone from the public wishes to be heard regarding stormwater management ordinance, which we will vote on tonight because this is the second reading, uh, please just raise your hand virtually and and speak to this ordinance only right now. I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, when we came out of, I apologize for chiming in, um, I know we were, we were supposed to have one additional resolution coming out of closed session.
We'll do that under new bit, we'll do that under new business counseling. I have three of them I'm going to ask for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, four, actually, I believe four.
Right, can can, I have a motion to close the public portion on this?
All moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Great, now I understand that because it is an ordinance, we have to actually approve the ordinance, correct?
Correct. The motion to approve, Your Honor.
May I have a motion to approve ordinance 21 dash zero two?
All moved. Second.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson's Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Katrubes?
Yes.
It passes.
And then the next ordinance, and this is a second reading, and today is the public hearing on it.
Do you have to open to the public on this?
Yes.
He needs to read, he needs to read the title.
Yeah, yes, I was going to do that, Councilman Pharaoh. Uh, so um, ordinance 21 dash zero three. It's an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement ordinance number 20 dash zero four, entitled, quote, an ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salaried, appointed, and elected officials within the borough of Englewood Cliffs, the county of Bergen, the state of New Jersey, close quote, by amending, revising, and supplementing the 2021 salary for the position of Borough Administrator for an acting or otherwise closed parent. Uh, I need to open to the public on this, so I could have a motion to open to the public, please.
All moved.
Second.
What what was the number of that ordinance?
Favor?
21.
Hi.
Mr. Mr. De Gregorio, do you have an agenda? It's all there.
I do, I'm looking at it. I'm I'm.
I'm sorry, who moved it?
Pharaoh.
Thank you. And Wu seconded it. Thank you.
And all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Okay, um, so uh, th- this is now open to the public for discussion. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak only with respect to 21 dash zero three, which is the ordinance I just read into the record, uh, please virtually raise your hand or wave at me or unmute yourself. State your name and address. Okay, can I have a motion? I don't see anyone. Can I have a motion to close the public portion discussion on 21 dash zero?
All moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Uh, that's Councilman Wu on on the motion.
Yes, I have it.
Okay.
Trubus on the motion.
Favor?
Hi.
Um, I didn't hear a lot of eyes there.
Hi.
Hi. I'm sorry, repeat that, Mayor. I didn't hear.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay.
Oh, yes, hold on a second. Are we going to take a vote? Are we taking a vote?
No, this is a motion to close the public portion.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Please just stop jumping in. Um.
Sorry.
We we've now closed the public portion on 21 dash zero three. And and now there needs to be a vote to approve it. So can I have a motion to approve ordinance 21 dash zero three?
All moved. Second.
Hey, uh, Madam Clerk, did you get those?
Yes.
Okay.
Council. Councilperson's Wu?
Uh, yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
This uh, this uh, approves a $95,000 salary for the Borough Administrator? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have a resume on file? Do we have, did we, who did we interview? Did the, did the, did the, um, did we have a process of choosing the best Borough Administrator that we could get? And we are adding, we're adding quite a big sum to our budget, which probably is close to $36 per household to pay this nearly $100,000 salary. Um, what was the procedure in hiring um, this person was?
Your Honor.
How many interviews did take place, if I can inquire respectfully?
De Gregorio, what I'm going to do is have Mr. Bernstein answer your questions so you could consult your iPhone and see what Ms. Geiger is telling you to say next, okay?
The the answer to the question.
It's my iPhone. Nobody's, nobody's consulting.
Councilman, the answers to the questions are no different than the answers to the questions you raised last month when this ordinance was introduced. As for breaking down dollars per household, I hope the public understands that there is nothing better than a reformed financial individual. But the fact of the matter, fact of the matter is, sir, that this is an ordinance for salary for administrator. I will indicate to you, in my experience in representing public entities throughout the state, this is a bargain. It has nothing to do with the individual in question. $95,000 for a full-time administrator is not what the numbers you see. And having been the former general counsel to the New Jersey Municipal Management Association, I can absolutely tell you that the numbers are higher. This is in in accordance with the last full-time administrator that the Borough had two and a half years ago when they was a full-time administrator. You've had a part-time administrator the last two years.
Well, you're you're doing an awful lot of defense uh, here.
In what the situation.
No, but I I would, I would imagine that towns that have a Borough Administrator at that salary are much larger. I think if you look at towns here, they, we're a small town and.
You're not that small.
Well, we have a lot of big egos in this town, but we're a small town. Um, I will say.
You're not that small.
Okay, so I just, I I'm going to vote no on this. I appreciate all the work that's been put in. I do think 95,000, if there was no consultation, there were no interviews. To me, and I think the public really needs to know that this is more like, forgive me if I'm saying something wrong, it's a political appointment, but that's fine. As long as that person is going to be there, he is going to give me access, give give people equal access, like equal play on the playing field. That's all, that's all we need.
So David, David, you are welcome to come to Borough Hall and sign checks today. That was equal access and you didn't do it. But uh, do you have the agenda in front of you, David?
I do, it's right here.
What, do you see number 83? Do you see number?
Why are we, 83 or 03? 83?
83.
Okay, why are we changing the subject now back to 83?
I want you to understand that you voted overwhelmingly for 83. 83 would not have existed if it wasn't for the acting Borough Administrator doing her job, okay? And along with everything before that today also.
I think that you need to be careful because those employees haven't been rice or have they?
No, no, they would, this would not have existed. So.
There's no, there's no, there's no requirement to be rice in a public session.
We've almost had a love fest so far, so let's just continue on. I'm going to respectfully vote no. And I think the public is, really needs to know what the situation was and why we have this person in that position. That's all.
You're just speaking for the sake of speaking. We hire the the best for this borough, okay? We have a great police chief. We have a great acting Borough Administrator. We are only hiring the best. And we're getting results that we want, and that's what matters to our public. It might not matter because you're so politically driven. I don't care, I don't care about what the. I don't care about what the party of anybody is who works for this borough. I really don't. I just want them to do a good job, honestly, and, and, and get it done for the public, okay? You, my friend, need to actually start understanding that. Politics stops the day after the election, and that's when management starts, and you're part of management now.
I'm not. I'm a councilperson. I have to stay out of, out of management. That's what we have a Borough Administrator for.
Move on, please.
By the way, by the way, um, how many, you said we got the best, but how do you know, Your Honor, that we got the best if you didn't hi-, if you didn't interview anybody? That's my question. And, you know, so you have to interview people and you have to give equal chances to everybody.
Because we are result-driven. You are politically driven, okay?
Oh, no, I'm not. I'm result-driven, but I don't want to argue about that. Nice dog. Doesn't look anything like mine.
Okay, she decided to join our meeting.
I guess you need some, uh, some, uh, defense, uh, help. You, yeah, I'm a non-lawyer and I'm doing pretty good against you tonight.
A-actually, other people would say you aren't, but that's not me. You're delusional tonight, actually, is what you are. But go ahead. Let's continue with the vote.
Katrubis?
Mr. Digigori, please have some compassion for everybody's time. Can you just move forward with borough business? Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you're tired. You can go, we'll, we'll-
I didn't say I was tired, sir. I said, please have compassion for everyone's time. There's a big difference. And I think the mayor is correct. You're being a little delusional, but let's please move on.
I like that. We now have a cat on the screen also, which is great.
Motion carries.
Thank you. But whenever we have stress points, we should all get our pets up to these, uh, to these meetings.
You're really picking on this little bird today, you know? I mean, uh, I'm powerless, but-
Um, you know, I just want to mention, actually, that's a great point, because there, there was one time over the last couple of years where I was the only uh, Republican in closed session. And, and there was no one actually in there to basically say what went on in there. And, and I got ganged up on. And I think, David, tonight, you got to experience hospitality from us, congeniality. You are welcomed into closed session. Nobody made you feel like you're not a Republican. We, we did great. And I hope that when, when, in the future, if anyone else's roles reversed, you do the same, because I tell you, it was not comfortable being in there without one standing over me with a clenched fist at one time, okay?
Well, Mayor, I, I-
Not report that properly in the minutes. Uh, that's a whole nother issue, which we'll deal with.
Mayor, I just want, there's only one thing, Mayor, point of order.
Twenty-one dash zero-four, first reading, uh, tonight. First reading is tonight, twenty-one dash zero-four. The second reading and public hearing will be April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. NJSA, per N-J-S-A, forty-eight, colon, four dot forty-five point fourteen, close. So this is just to introduce it. Uh, Mr. Bernstein, is that the motion just to introduce?
It's introduced. I will point out to the mayor and council that this is a situation that is required as part of the budget procedure to establish a cap bank. It does not mean that the municipality is required to go to the cap. It allows, the state allows for cap banking in order to, for the possible use down the road if necessary, and to establish limits therein.
Thank you. You made that sound much better than I did. Okay, um, we have a motion to introduce that, please.
Tom.
Second.
Second.
Have a roll call?
Councilperson Wu.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
Digigorio.
Yes.
Katrubis.
Yes.
Next on the agenda are the committee and council member reports. Um, if the, the chairperson of each committee, um, would just give us an update, and I'll, I'll just go down the list. Public Safety Chairman Wu.
Public Safety, um, am I chairing that one, Mayor? I think that one is. Is that correct?
That's yours.
Yeah, okay, sorry about that. I, I don't have-
That's police and fire.
Okay, I don't have any, um, updates on, on public safety for this meeting.
Okay, great. Lighting, uh, that's Councilman Digigorio.
I've been doing research on my own, uh, regarding, uh, cool, nifty lighting that would be very directional, face down, with a thirty-two-hundred Kelvin warm temperature. Um, I hope to reach out to, uh, other community, uh, members um, with strategic lighting that may help, um, nighttime activities. Um, so, uh, I will be reaching out and we will, I'll be opening it up to, um, to, uh, to those that want to participate. Meantime, um, I, I certainly would love to gain entry to the administration building, because that's really the spot where I can do, quietly do my research. I don't want to do it at my job, and I don't really, I can't really do it at home. So I've been denied entry into the administration building, and, um, it's a place for me uh, on the conference table, six foot apart, all compliant, uh, where I could work. And I, I'm respectfully requesting entry in there for about a half an hour to forty minutes, so, um, after my day job, uh, so I can be fair to the, um, public and do the research. On the conference table, away from all occupants in the, um, and there's only, I think, two or three on the, on that floor in enclosed, um, offices. And while I have the floor, can I say one more thing, um, Your Honor?
This is supposed to be a report on lighting, okay?
Okay, well, one more, I, I just, I, so I don't want to pick up type, time later, but the one thing-
David, no, 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 stop. Please, please. Now, let me just be clear, because you're creating this false narrative, and you actually went to the Bergen Record, and they asked me about why, why you're not being allowed in Borough Hall. And of course, they didn't print the article, because I actually responded, and I, and I wrote, Dear Katie, Katie Sobko, "From the start of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, I have safeguarded the health of Borough employees by following the science of virus spread resulting in access to Borough Hall by employees only and by elected officials, including myself, who have actual business to be there with my approval. Mr. Digigorio entered recently without any actual business, then recklessly refused having his temperature checked, and refused to complete our COVID-nineteen visitor report form, while Councilman Katrubis took his temperature, filled out the form, and was requested by me to be there on an emergent matter. In true hypocritical manner, Mr. Digigorio works for a terrified school system and acknowledges following COVID-nineteen rules at his employment, but not at his appointed position in Englewood Cliffs. The Borough Administrator did make very reasonable arrangements for all council members, including Mr. Digigorio, to receive requested documents electronically and in the foyer of Borough Hall. And I was amazed that Katie Sobko would actually ask me for a quote. Uh, and then I was even more amazed that, you know, we all know why she did, because you probably went to her running and crying about not being able to go in there and potentially infect our employees, which we safeguarded.
The attorney is muted. Mr. Bernstein's muted.
I'm sorry. I don't know how that happened.
Mayor, Your Honor, may I respond to you?
I think Mr. Bernstein wanted to say something.
The point is, Your Honor, leaving aside the politics, the Borough has a COVID-nineteen policy. We have had a number of individuals who have tested positive over the last three months. The policy is in place. Individuals need to follow the policy. I will indicate to the governing body that I have had complaints as to such. And frankly, we all need, and the pandemic isn't getting any better, as you all know, we all need to follow it. So, uh, I would comment this to any member of the governing body. Uh, I'm aware that Ms., uh, McMorris indicated that people want to come in. She'll make the arrangements for such with appointment. But drop-in visitors, whether it's the public or governing body members or vendors of the like, are not being permitted. Ms. Duffy's well aware that we've actually stopped vendors from trying to come in. We've held up papers in the window to show them what bid results are, because they're not being allowed in the building. So-
Point of order?
We also-
Point of order. May, may I respond? May I, may I respond?
Oh, just to make it clear also, you know, we, we don't have multiple employees for each job function, so, you know, we, we really do have to safeguard everybody's health. And we've done a great job, really. We, we have had, uh, such, uh, good, good results going through this terrible pandemic, and we want to continue our vigilance, despite the fact that Mr. Digigorio thinks it's okay to traipse through every place, because that's what he wants. We have Katrubis.
Point of order, point of order.
I just wanted to ask you a question. Do I have the floor? Who has the floor, Mr. Mayor?
I, I think I go first. I said point of order first.
Add the floor. Katrubis is next.
Um, and Mr. Mayor, a quick question for you, because I know that you mentioned in your, you mentioned my name in that statement. Was, um, was, was, was I mentioned by, uh, Ms. Sobko when, when, when she, when she, um, reached out to you?
Uh, I'm sorry, let me check.
And if I was, for what purpose? I'm just wondering how anybody, there was only a certain number of people that knew that I was in the building. Mr. Digigorio was one of them. Just curious.
Uh, she, Miss Katie Sobko did mention you, because you realize, though, that Bergen Record is a former newspaper and now an extension of a political party, not of which I belong to, or you.
Okay.
Point of order?
I'm just, I'm just curious, Mr. Digigorio, perhaps you should, uh, enlighten the public on why I was, uh, called into Borough Hall?
May I speak? Your Honor, may I speak? Yes, okay. First of all, I just have to clear something up very quickly. Um, the mayor, uh, in some comments earlier, basically said, intimated or said outright, that, um, that our cronies are giving us money under the table or something like that, record, uh, regarding the profitable, affordable housing, eight-hundred Sylvan. First of all, that is totally slanderous. You are spreading rumors about me that you have no basis. I would never, ever, in a million years, take a bribe from any developer or anything. I am sworn to the Constitution. It's slanderous that you said that, and I resent that. And I think you should apologize. And furthermore, and don't mute me, please. No, no, you're, I still have the floor. Furthermore, if Mr. Wu had a heart, he would come to my defense. Mr. Wu or Mr. uh, Pharaoh, or even Mr. Katrubis or Mr. Park, but you all sit there and you say nothing as you let the leader of this town slander me and slander Ms. Savari. And I don't think that's fair. And it doesn't speak well to, about anyone on the council that you're allowed to say that kind of-
You doth protesteth too much, Mr. Digigorio. Let's-
Excuse me, I'm just responding to your comments in a vigorous way. And second-
Ms. McMorris, you, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Mayor, um, I, I, I feel that I must comment on what Mr. Digigorio is saying, only because I see northjersey.com is, is, um, is on this call. Um, what's most troubling to me is that, um, I, I, I spoke to Councilman Digigorio several times when he attempted to gain access to Borough Hall. Um, he-
And the police were involved.
I would appreciate, Mayor, if I just may speak without being interrupted, because, you know, given that he feels that he wants to share this. Um, he, he came to Borough Hall, um, without an appointment. Uh, you set a policy, Mayor, I'm upholding it. We all know why we needed to tighten that policy, because within the first uh, ten days that I was in office, I, I was exposed, there was, by someone that had COVID-nineteen. And the entire, thank God it happened over a week, a holiday weekend. Uh, the Borough Attorney is aware. We had to fumigate the entire building. I had to go and test it. Other individuals had to go get tested. Thank God no one else caught it. Given that exposure, and that could have been a, a bad situation, where we would have shut down Borough Hall.
Were you in Borough Hall after you were exposed?
You don't have the floor.
The answer is no. Let's make this abundantly clear. No one-
I just want to make sure she's following the, her own, um,
This is why you mute him, because he doesn't let someone finish a statement, okay?
No, but he's the guy that wants equal playing time for all the kids.
Given, given what took place, the decision was made to tighten our policies and protocols, which we did. The police, myself, yourself, the Borough Attorney, everyone worked together to come out with, with what we felt was the best policy.
And you, and you enjoyed a pizza in there. You had a pizza. I saw two pizzas being delivered, and you were in the conference room eating.
Mayor?
You don't have the floor.
Okay, this is totally, um, um, Mayor, uh, uh, Councilman Digigorio, um, snuck in the back door without permission the day that, um, uh, that I opened it to get a pizza for the IT vendor, who asked me to buy him food. And I did, because he was there for all day, uh, he was there all day dealing with an emergent situation for the Borough. Okay, that's what the pizza was for. I, I, this is, I think it's really ridiculous. I had, have to even explain that, but if he needs to know, that's what it was for. But the, the important issue here is, Mayor, that Councilman Digigorio snuck in the back door. He refused to have his temperature checked. He refused to fill out the form. He told me he would think about it. Prior to doing it, he ran throughout the building, upstairs, downstairs, back hallways, in rooms, opening closets, causing a complete disruption. And then he decided to walk back out, have his temperature checked, fill in the form, and come back. He had no Borough work other than to disrupt all the Borough employees. He then came back the same day, the next day, and demanded to come in again. It was at that point, given that he was coming in to disrupt Borough Hall and violate the policy, that we did not let him in. The police was called twice on Councilman Digigorio, because he refuses to listen to the policy. And not only that, to further jeopardize situations, he decided to go home, get a desk, and bring it and place it in the parking lot at Borough Hall, violating other ordinances, okay? And public rights of way. Again, I have no idea why. He has been sending me what I consider to be harassing emails through two o'clock in the morning. Okay, and, and no employee uh, uh, should be, uh, put through this when all they're doing is trying to protect their other employees within Borough Hall so that we can function. Okay, I thank all the other council people, the Police Department, all the vendors for working together through this very trying time of COVID-nineteen. And I said to Councilman Digigorio, I would, if he needed Borough business, I would open the lobby up. I put two tables down there for him with chairs. I'll bring him whatever he needs, but he is insisting to come and sit next to my office and Rose, who works out in the, out in the open. And it's just not proper to be exposing employees. And I, I'm disappointed that he went to the newspaper and tried to turn this into a, a story other than what it is. And I'm shocked that Katie Sobko is not contacting the employees to find out what Councilman Digigorio is doing.
So I have to go unmute herself if she wants to-
Bottom line is I have every right to be in the administration building, and that's, you know-
We were actually, what we were actually doing right now, and I know this is hard to believe, we were actually going through the committee, uh, reports. And, um, we've just taken up way too much time on this, so if there's anyone-
Twenty minutes, almost twenty minutes, Mayor.
If anyone with a committee report, um-
I didn't do any talking.
If there's anyone with a committee report, uh, please, um, feel free to take the floor now. Otherwise, we need to move on to old and new business.
Uh, I, I have a-
I, I just wanted to mention to, uh, make sure that the residents, that they know that the DPWs open Saturday and Sunday morning between the hours of nine o'clock until eleven forty-five to drop off recycling.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of, uh, sorry, Councilman Katrubis, your hand was up.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman, uh-
Mayor, I just wanted to mention, uh, that we are holding bi-monthly finance committee meetings. Um, in the past, I don't believe that was ever done. Um, the EPW was never asked about what capital investment- The DPW was never asked about what capital investments they needed last year. We were very surprised to find that out. So we're going to institute some discipline this year. I hope I can work well with Councilman De Gregorio and Councilman Catrubes together with the for the rest of the year.
Okay, great, thank you.
To reinforce what William said, I put up on my screen.
Councilman Catrubes had the floor, Mr. De Gregorio.
Yeah, I, I just want to bring a report for, as recreation chair. I know that we've been, the entire community's had it very difficult in terms of the isolation with COVID, et cetera. And that certainly has not helped the situation with rec. But it, 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 it's, and it has gone through, we used to have a recreation director. We used to have some pretty vibrant programs. And that's sort of, was all gone. And I'm trying to resurrect that this, this past year. I've tried to initiate some COVID-friendly events. We've initiated some virtual yoga, which is tomorrow evening as well for all the residents that are listening this evening. I worked with the coach, with Coach Billy, to kick off girls softball and giving, giving him any sort of resources that he needed. Working with the Little League coaches to make certain that their new season kickoff is as seamless as possible. And we are also in the process of discussing a COVID-friendly Easter event for the children in town. Some more on that to come soon. Of course, we discussed the kickoff of the, the Children's Basketball League. And, and I'm pleased to report is later on that we're going to try to work on hiring a part-time rec director. And I also want to thank Ms. Duffy and Ms. Weber, who will soon be assisting with the recreation duties. And hopefully, until we get the rec director in place, and try to move, be more, be more forward moving in terms of being one of the first communities and trying to get people out there and interacting slowly but surely. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And the yoga.
Point of order.
Yoga tomorrow night is actually a Zoom meeting. It's virtual. I'm hoping I could join in. It's, I mean, I could read you the ID if anybody wants to write it down. It's, the meeting ID is 860-713-2588. That's 860-713-2588. And the passcode will be 388-605. That's 388-605. Look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow and.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May, maybe if we can even send out a reminder email to the residents. I don't know if that's even an option.
Oh, yeah. The Borough Clerk, please do that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Recreation director, part-time hire. This is a new business. Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Catrubes?
Yeah, again, I, I really believe that the, the town is in, very much in need of this resource. It's something that many parents have been requesting. And it's something that it'll be a very, a great step forward to get the children out and about and giving them all sorts of activities that are COVID-friendly. And I hope that the entire council will support it.
Okay, I believe we would have to advertise for that. And to do that, we would need a motion.
Yes.
Yes, I see you shaking your head and you said yes, so.
Motion.
One, one, one final thing to, Mr. Mayor, if we can please have any of the, I know everybody's workload is very strenuous at this moment. But if we can please have any resumes that are coming in to go directly to Ms. McMorris, the acting girl administrator, so she can vet them properly. I have full confidence that she'll be able to assist in this project because she had, she was a tremendous resource to me in terms of being the previous rec director and.
Okay, so let's, let's have a motion to advertise.
You have, you actually have a motion, Mr. Mayor, from Mr. De Gregorio.
Point of order. I fully, full-heart of agree with Tim.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion and I have a point of order on the table.
Why don't we get the second and then?
Second, okay, great. Tim, I just want to, I, I, since this is something that is funded by the taxpayers, I also want to reiterate that maybe it should be in writing that anyone who signs up for, whether it be whatever sport, there should be equal playing time for all children. That's so important. Then all the children are winners. If, if there's someone that's on the bench for the whole game, game after game, it's not fair. So I think that really needs to be a part of the regulations to be fair to, to the students, to the children that need it the most.
Honestly, I coached, I coached soccer in this town for 13 years. And I, I was very pleased that all the coaches didn't need to be told those basic things about life and coaching and parenting. They all knew what to do. And I promise you, David, tomorrow you will have equal time on yoga, just like everyone else.
Namaste.
So, look, I, if, if there's a problem, people tell us about it, but, or, but, you know, you can't micromanage everything.
I will motion in a second, Your Honor.
We have a, on favor, can I just do that?
No roll call.
Yes.
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 Councilperson Wu. Councilperson Wu.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
Yes.
Savari. I'm sorry, Catrubes?
Yes.
All right, that's Resolution 84. Your Honor, I'm asking for three additional resolutions tonight.
Okay.
First resolution is a request from Council President for advertising for the position of Deputy Borough Clerk. The position exists within not only state statute, but in the borough code. And I think the Council President may have something else to say on the matter.
Right now, we're a bit short-staffed at Borough Hall. And I think bringing someone on board to assist the team in, in the, in the clerk duties would help us get through a lot of the day-to-day tasks.
Who will be on the interview committee?
Have a motion, please. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So Councilman Wu moved. Councilman Catrubes seconded. Have a roll call, please.
Councilperson Wu. Councilperson Wu.
Yes. Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
I think that we need to have, number one, we need to ascertain if that's the correct position to hire for. And number two, we need to, we also, point of order, point of order.
Well, actually, there is no point of order, Mr. De Gregorio, on a vote.
Well.
The yes or no, it's a yes or no vote.
We're already paying $95,000 for a borough administrator and we're hiring an additional person. I think we're abusing the taxpayers' money. And every, every hundred thousand dollars means $36, $36. And we have to have, you know, you, you.
Borough Clerk, can we just go to the next person?
No, my vote.
We'll go to the next person, please.
Catrubes?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bernstein, what did you have next?
The next item, Your Honor, is I need direction. I need formality to withdraw relative to the McMorris versus Angleton's appeal.
Yes, have a motion to withdraw that appeal.
I would like a point of order.
No, you're, you're the Borough Clerk.
I would like to say something, Mayor.
No, you're out of order. You're out of order.
What are you afraid of?
I, you know what? This is a meeting for elected officials to speak.
Okay.
All right, so. Have a second?
Second.
That was Councilman Wu moved. Councilman Catrubes seconded. Have a roll call, please.
Councilperson Wu.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
I need to understand this more. Could you describe it to me, Eric?
I described it to you, Mr. De Gregorio, in executive session. I also provided an opinion and the backup force saying, please, let's not. I realize you have this belief that somehow you need to make everything public for the public to know. Not everything needs to be public.
They have a right to know it.
They also have a right, surprisingly, Councilman, they also have a right not to spend money on lawyers. And this is one of those moments where you keep telling me you don't want to spend legal fees, and I'm trying to end the legal situation.
But you're making someone pay for it.
I'm not making anyone pay for it. A judge made somebody pay for it. And the appeal, along with the last resolution earlier today, was never approved to be made.
So tell the public who this involves. Come clean. Why all the secrets?
Please just skip over, Mr. De Gregorio. He's just grandstanding.
I'm not grandstanding. The public has a right to know.
We are voting.
It's on, it's on the agenda.
What's happened to your transparency?
No, we, it's transparent. I'm telling you, we are voting. You have the right to vote. You choose everything but.
Shut someone down. Why can't, why, what are you afraid of?
The tail's not going to wag the dog here. We have a council meeting to run, okay? We've heard enough from you. We're voting. You can either vote yes, no, abstain or recuse, or just no vote, which it seems like what you're doing.
So let me just ask you this question here.
Borough Clerk, please go to the next person.
So you're, I can't.
You had an opportunity to vote. You had five opportunities. You chose not to vote.
No, I'm asking questions.
No, you answered all your questions. Now you're just grandstanding.
I'm not grandstanding. I'm doing my job as a councilman.
Wake up tomorrow morning and go to work far from our homes at an early hour. You may not. I don't want you wasting our time anymore. Do your job. Do it the right way. You get the chance to vote. No one is denying you that vote. But what we're doing is saying, we've had enough of you tonight, okay? Because you're just gibberish and delusional. So if you want to vote, vote right now. Otherwise, we'll go to the next person.
You're name-calling, and that's not right.
No, I said you're delusional. That's not a name.
Take the vote.
It's an adjective.
Councilman De Gregorio, will you be voting?
I still want to know what the vote is about. How can I vote on something I don't know what it's about? I want details.
Mr. De Gregorio, I gave you details in executive session. You've been provided details. This is nothing more than a public grandstand. For purposes of the record, it's number three on the pending litigation for the closed session earlier this evening. And as the mayor indicated, it's a yes, it's, it's a vote. It's not a, let me get more detail.
So who is, who is, who is going to have to pay money because of this?
Well, the Borough Clerk, please skip him and go to the next person.
Councilman Catrubes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
De Gregorio, it passed. Did you want to vote?
Look, I want the facts and I want you to explain them to the community. I want the facts out there.
Mr. Bernstein, what else did you have?
I have a request, Your Honor, to approve that my office is going to handle the appeal of the concerned residents litigation at the Appell Division on behalf of the borough and all named defendants.
Okay, I have a motion for that.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Duffy, did you get those?
No, I didn't see who moved it.
I think it was Mr. Wu. I think it's, your microphone's not working so well.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why. I apologize.
You're the most tech-savvy person on this council too, by the way. So those things usually happen to me.
Councilperson Wu.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
Again, I need more information. This concerned citizens, who is concerned citizens? Who are they?
Yes, no, recuse, abstain.
So what is it that you want to, what are you voting on here? You're voting on whether to.
We're voting, Your Honor, for the public. We're voting on eliminating two special counsel on an appeal of Judge Farrington's decision upholding the October 4, 2020 meeting, which had been contested by the concerned residents in Superior Court. We're eliminating two special counsel and authorizing my office to handle on behalf of everybody.
I still don't understand. This is the concerned residents, right, of Angleton's. Who are they?
I have no idea, Mr. De Gregorio, and it's not my issue. The issue is I'm here to represent the borough.
I just want to have the floor. You keep asking the same questions. All the information was provided to you prior to this meeting. It was provided to you in, in closed session, I believe, as well. You're, you're just wasting everyone's time. And quite frankly, it's not acceptable from anyone. Especially an elected official, but you're not. You're appointed. So you're on the council, but you're appointed, okay? You're an appointed official. Do you want to vote? Yes, no, recuse, abstain?
I want more information, is what I said before. And you know, no matter what, you cannot throw me off the council. You don't have that authority.
We're not throwing you off anywhere. We're just not letting.
I have, I have every right.
We're not going to circle the drain with you, okay? You, you circled the drain. We're going to go on with voting. Borough Clerk, would you please go to the next person?
Councilperson Catrubes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right, thank you, sir. Anything else?
The discussion on special counsel is unnecessary.
Okay, any other old business or new business from anyone on council?
Mr. Bernstein, will that last one be a resolution or just a motion?
I'm going to do all three of them by resolution. I'll get them to you shortly.
Thank you.
New business, new business, point of, new business. There is, several houses, I've noticed, and one house in particular, there's a refrigerator sitting out front. Who is in charge of doing inspections?
That's something that you just report to the DPW Chair or to the Superintendent DPW, Borough Administrator. They'll take care of it. We, we all see things. We all live here. I go running every night, every morning. I see things. I report them. But I don't take up the public's time telling them that I just saw, you know, a refrigerator in somebody's front yard or a car in somebody's backyard. We don't take each other's time that way, okay? We're respectful, David, of everyone's time. So if you have issues of that, quality of life issues, report them. Just report them. That's what an adult would do. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
To adjourn, please.
So moved.
On favor?
All right.
10:48.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
My pleasure, Your Honor.
Mr. Zimmerman, thank you. I see you're still there. And Borough Clerk, thank you. Borough Administrator, thank you as well. Have a good night, everyone. See you at yoga tomorrow.
Namaste.